Calling the meeting to order. I would like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones. Please stand. Oh, roll call first. All seven trustees present, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the election of school officers. Nominations are now open for president.
I nominate Clem Cam 2 for president.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other nominations? All in favor?
A move that we nominate, Clem by activation.
Thank you.
I'm second.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to vice president. Mr. Arredondo.
Oh.
What?
I think we still need to take a vote.
All in favor? Vice President? Mr. Arredondo.
Thank you, Mrs. Cantillo. I'd like to nominate John McGlothlin for vice president.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? Nominations are now open for secretary.
I nominate Miguel Arredondo for secretary.
Do I hear a second?
I nominate Kathy Hansen for secretary.
We will have a vote. All in favor of Miguel?
Do we need a second? Two motions.
None. Okay. All in favor? One, two, three. All opposed? I'm sorry.
I'm not opposed.
All votes, all voting for Kathy, raise your hand. One, two, three. Oh dang it.
Swing. Can we call it?
Okay, we're gonna vote again. All in favor of Miguel as secretary, raise your hand. Two, three, four. All in favor of Kathy Hansen? Congratulations, vice president and secretary.
And president.
Okay, moving on. Moving on. Superintendent's report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We have a nice, big group today, so, on summer, so thank you very much for being here. Can you hear me now? Dave, can you hear me? Okay, good. So if I could get Allison Jaeger up to the front, and if I could get the trustees up here to... Hi Allison, gig 'em. So we want to honor our valedictorian, Allison Joy Jaeger, who's the daughter of Larry and Melissa Jaeger. Allison attended Hernandez Elementary School, Miller Middle School, and she plans to further her education at Texas A&amp;M and pursue a degree in business. And she's also a great sports fan. I know Mr. McGlothlin's gonna start inching away from you because of the burn torn. But we want to congratulate her as she just finished four years at the high school representing our district with great pride and joy, and we really appreciate everything she did and will do in the future. Congratulations. And now you get to take it. Well, I don't know where our photographer guy... There he is. That's right. All right. Are you ready? One, two, three. Parents, Mr. Ms. Jaeger, come on. Yes, that's him.
The other, the other sounds like they're...
I know. We also wanted to recognize our soliditorian, Amanda Celeste Sal. She couldn't be here tonight because she has to work, so we also want to thank her for her service and everything she's done to represent the district, and we appreciate her very much. She will be attending the University of Notre Dame in the fall, so...
All right.
And before we turn it over to you, Madam President, I'd like to take just a moment of privilege to wish Ms. Costilla a happy birthday.
Ms. Costilla is the first. Happy birthday. I think I say birthday and then say name, and normally we tend to forget, right?
I purposely didn't say anything so that she would wonder if I actually remembered, but...
No.
Diane put her birthday on my phone. All of y'all's birthday, so I know not to forget, but we wished her well.
Oh, I thank you.
And we gave you a great present to be here for a long time.
Yeah. My husband asked me, he says, "You coming home early?" I said, "No, I don't think so."
You'll see him the day after.
Unlikely.
Just fine. Madam President, over to you.
Public forum. We have several people signed up. We'll start with Diane Wasnick.
As Ms. Wasnick approaches the podium, I have a timer here on my phone for three minutes, and at one minute I'll just wave the yellow card.
Thank you. My name is Diane Wasnick, and I'm here for the San Marcos. I have not been keeping up with my daily records lately, but it's back upon me, and I missed the friend of originally and the news about the La Cima location being considered only rechargeable for your school. And so I wrote you a letter today. I hope you all have a chance to read it. I covered several points in there that I thought were important, but I neglected one that I wanted to explain to you. Everything that we build...
Excuse me, they can't hear you. Can you check to see if your mic's on?
And I pause the timer, Ms. Wasnick.
Everything that we build on the hills above town are going to cause flooding to be higher and more frequent in town. And this is on the purgatory upper watershed, which comes right into town and into the San Marcos River, which, as you know, floods. This is hard to conceive of, but at the same time that we cause flooding to be worse by building a lot of impervious cover on the recharge zone, we reduce the amount of recharge that can actually go into the springs and keep our river flowing during droughts. This is because impervious cover speeds up runoff. It runs off of buildings and roads quicker than it would on ground, which is rough and has a lot of clumps of grass or rocks. That speeded-up water goes into the ravines and creeks, many of which have cracks in the bottom, which cause recharge to flow down into the aquifer and thus to the springs. Those cracks need that water to flow for a long time slowly in order to get maximum recharge. When you speed up the runoff, you have vast amounts of water that hit the creek all at once, flow quickly into town. Some areas have flood-controlled dams and some don't. Flood-controlled dams are not the ultimate solution. They are only good to a 500-year event. So it's important for us to understand that at the same time we might be causing flooding, we will be also reducing the amount of recharge that goes into our aquifer from our recharge zone if we build. And schools bring roads and more and more development, so I just wanted to pass that on to you. I hope that you'll consider a site that is closer to many of the east-side developments that are starting to be built, and I know your school district goes way east. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustees, just so you know, they're... She referenced an email, so all the emails are provided for you.
Thank you. Carol Peters will be speaking on the new elementary site.
I'm Carol Peters from Maxwell, Texas, San Marcos CIST. I am speaking about the selection of the site for the new elementary school. I've spoken to you about this in the past, so it's nothing new. I am also representing the parents in Blanco River Village, the parents in Butterfly Meadows, the parents in Country Glen, all of which are out east in the northeast section and in District 2 of San Marcos CIST. Which reminds me, I was going to begin by saying, welcome, and thank you for serving the San Marcos CIST. I am not speaking to the city council, the San Marcos City Council. I am not speaking to the Hayes County Commissioners Court. I am speaking proudly to the San Marcos Consolidated Independent School District. Now, my understanding is that back in the late 60s, about 50 years ago, is when the Board of Trustees of the San Marcos, maybe ISD at the time, this is before my time, voted to consolidate with a large portion of land in Caldwell County, which included Martindale and other areas out there. So I know that we go to... Country Glen is the farthest on the northeast. We go all the way out Highway 80, all the way almost to Toll Road 130. We butt up against the Prairie Lee School District, not sure exactly where that line is. And 50 years ago, we voted to join you because you promised at the time to build a school for us in Caldwell County, part of the district. That was 50 years ago. So I know that you're following the developers now. They're donating land, but I don't think they're donating the building of the school. So it's just the land. So I'd like you to consider the fact that we would love to be... When you redistrict for this new elementary school, we would love it to be out in Caldwell County. Thank you.
Third speaker, Solomon Amadon. Did I say her name right?
Solomon Amadon.
Amadon, okay.
It's pretty close. Good afternoon. Okay. Hello, my name is Solomon Amadon, and I'm here representing basically transportation. I've been a school bus driver for about 15 years, working in the district. My wife is also a school bus monitor, and what we wanted, what I wanted to talk about is salaries for crossing guards, monitors, and all hourly employees. What we're seeing a lot of with the salary in San Marcos is it is so low that it's hard for the monitors and crossing guards and other hourly employees that are making right now $9.46 an hour start out. And some of them are not getting... For example, the crossing guards only get about 20 hours a week, and that's it. And monitors, if they're lucky, they get 30 hours a week. So it's hard for them to make a living, and for example, in the summer, they are eligible to get food stamps, government assistance, because they don't have a living wage that can keep them in the district. And also, the bills in San Marcos, rent, electricity, everything is going up. The city used to be relatively cheap to live in about five years ago. Now it's tripled in cost, and it's so difficult for a crossing guard or a monitor to be able to live and stay in the district. Basically, what they're having to do, they're having to get a second job, they're having to either move to another district where they're paying them a little bit more, or just, you know, quitting and finding something that's giving them more hours and more money. And these people live in the area, we want to keep them here, and we want them to stay, you know, in San Marcos, in Hayes County. And if we lose them, for example, the monitors and crossing guards, they are spit at by the children, a lot of the children, they're hit, they have things thrown at them. The crossing guards, when they're crossing the street, cars almost hit them all the time. There's a lot of crazy drivers out there. It's very difficult for them to get their job done because a lot of times people don't respect what they do. A lot of times the parents, when they're telling them, you know, "I'm trying to, you know, make sure your child is safe," the parent won't even cross the street to pick up their child. They have to cross the street, you know, getting through traffic. And also, the district spends thousands of dollars every year to train these individuals, to train the monitors and the crossing guards. And some of them, because they cannot stay in the district, they end up having to leave, and we, every year, we lose 10 to 20 of them. So it's pretty serious. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Juan J. Cruz.
Good evening, board, Mr. Carona. I'm here to talk about salaries. My name is Juan Cruz, I'm sorry. Vice President of San Marcos Educators. Please consider a significant hourly raise for our employees so they don't have to live in poverty. Okay? Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Susan Seaton.
Good evening, board and community. I want to echo what... I'm Susan Seaton, President of the San Marcos Educators Association. We are the only association that has hourly employees as our members. We are the only ones that they can join, that can stand up for their rights and help them. I want to talk a little bit about a living wage. Our hourly employees are the first people our children see every single morning when they get on that bus. They're the last person that they see every single afternoon. This is who cleans our schools and makes sure that they're safe. These are the people that cook the meals that may be the only time our children eat. They keep our schools safe, they help us. It's our teaching assistants who are vital to every teacher in our district. They're the ones tutoring, sometimes in the hallways and in bookrooms and in closets and helping in the libraries and helping our most needy students. These employees, our hourly employees, deserve a living wage in our town. I was talking to some of them recently, and what they said is, "We don't want to leave. We feel like our job has meaning and what we do is important. We want to stay here, but we have to be able to live. We love our community, we love our students, it gives us purpose. Please help us by..." Let's move towards a living wage. Right now, it's not, and we appreciate the raises in the past years, but they still cannot live. Like they said, during the summer times, many of our employees qualify for government assistance. That's not acceptable. When they can go to McDonald's or Buc-E's or Amazon and make a lot more than they do here, they keep themselves often in poverty because they want to work for our school district. They want to stay here. So please help me tonight by moving us towards a living wage and increasing our salaries for our hourly employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jennifer Shaw Fisher. La Cima versus Posey site.
I'm here tonight because I'm passionate about education and our community. We have that in common. I also have a child in this district, and we have loved our experience here. My son even asked to invite Mrs. Brenda Butler to his birthday and followed up the request with, "We're such good friends." Things like that warm a mama's heart. But tonight, I come concerned... I'm here to ask you to vote in favor of the Posey site, which ticks all the boxes. It can serve a more economically and ethically diverse population. It's on the border of the east side where the city comprehensive plan has placed growth. Yet it's accessible for those on the west and is both fiscally and environmentally responsible. The Trace developers have also worked well with the city. La Cima is a big gamble. Located on the recharge zone, this is a part of town we're trying to preserve. Why would we put a school where we don't want growth? Just doesn't make sense. A school would incentivize development and perhaps cost 25% more to build and maintain in order to comply with the restrictions that come along with construction in this sensitive site. And while we're talking about taxpayer dollars, I know that Trace is annexed, and the three or so others that are planning on being developed in the same area will be too. Can each of you tonight, who will be voting, guarantee that the properties at La Cima, as of tonight, will be annexed? Right now, we don't even know what La Cima will look like because it's changed so many times. I loudly supported the bond and would be disappointed to see the new school serving an exclusive, wealthier segment of our population while polluting the aquifer and catering to, my personal opinion, a development that shouldn't be. If you care about social justice and the environment, then I ask your vote to reflect that and to choose to build at Posey. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last speaker, Dan Lyon, on the superintendent's pay.
Thank you very much. I want to speak on a couple other things besides just superintendent's pay. My name is Dan Lyon. I say mean family income in San Marcos is $29,000 a year. Let me repeat this. Mean family income is $29,000 per year. Let that sink in. Starting teacher pay is $48,000 per year. Now, many of these teachers come from the bottom quarter of their graduating class. Yet they're telling me they're gonna go out and get jobs somewhere else if we don't give them more pay? Let them. All right. We are $300-plus million in debt. The superintendent makes $209,000 plus benefits. 72% of the children in this district are considered economically disadvantaged. We pay 20% of our income to service the debt we already have. Did anyone's taxes decrease? Did anyone's taxes stay the same? But our rates stayed the same. I urge you to get serious with the debt. We have not been serious at all with the debt. I've seen person after person come up and tell us how underpaid they are. Let me tell you what I make. I make $8,400 a year. Now, I do have some money that's tax-deferred, and that would bring me up to about $9,150. I make it by fine. If y'all can't make it on $48,000, it's time to look for a better job somewhere else that pays more. That's all there is to it. Anyway, two years ago, our budget was $56 million. Now it's over $70 million. Where is it gonna stop? Are we just gonna keep going up and up and up and up? I agree, maybe some of these lower-paid workers are underpaid. Of course, they are also able to go look for another job if they want one. Perhaps, you know, go down to Amazon. It's supposed to be, you know, it's supposed to be the golden goose, according to the people at the county level and, you know, city level. Heck, you'll make $10 an hour there, starting. So anyway... Anyway, if the land is to be donated for both sites, I also want to vote for Posey. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to reports and informational items, academic update, Emergentree, dual language, and STAR report.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. I'd like to introduce Ms. May Kaufman. She is our representative from Emergentree. Emergentree is our positive behavior management system that we've implemented in the district over the past two years, and this is just a very brief update.
Good evening, and thank you so much for your time. My name is May Kaufman, and I work with Emergentree Education, and we've been partnering here with San Marcos for the past two years to implement behavior systems that support all our students and help increase positive behaviors in school and then ultimately their academics as well. One of the big things when it comes to behavior in education, you always hear people say, "Well, how should we address it?" And they tend to kind of come from, I guess, two different camps. They either come from kind of that idea of the punitive side, and when things aren't going so well with kids in terms of their behavior, the questions start to come down like, "Well, what do we need to do to consequent harder, and what sort of things do we need to make sure we're putting in place so the students and the parents know that we're serious?" And certainly, there's some of those things that need to be considered. Consequences are necessary and certainly disciplinary responses. But then, a lot of times, you hear the other side, and you hear people say, "Well, really, we need to just build relationships with our kids, and certainly, we want students who walk into our building and know that they're loved and know that we're here for them." But what I would argue, and one of the things that we've been working with the district on, is not to kind of consider it one or the other, but really to say, "What if it's neither one of those?" And instead, what we need to do for behavior is think about it the same way we do everything else in education, because we know that really well. We know what it means to have good instruction, and so we want to take an instructional approach to behavior. So what I'm gonna update you on today is a little bit about what we've done with the district and then some results in terms of fidelity and where the district is with implementation at their schools. We're taking what we call a multi-tiered system approach to behavior, which means we want to consider what do we do for behavior for all kids to teach what sort of expectations we want to see in our schools and then respond to those and reinforce them when we see them happening. We want to consider what to do for at-risk kids and kids that start to struggle in terms of behavior, what sort of interventions can we put in place quickly so that we can intervene early before we get to really significant problems? And certainly, what do we need to do for kids at our highest-risk category, those for whom come with a lot of things from outside into our schools, maybe in some cases even have disabilities related to behavior? What do we do for those really high-risk populations? And in the end, all schools have to address all levels. If you don't have a strong Tier 1, you're gonna have an over-identification of kids needing intervention. If you don't have a strong Tier 2, you're gonna really tax those intervention resources, meaning you're gonna have to devote lots and lots of time and energy and materials to address those student needs. And then if you don't have a Tier 3, you certainly have kids whose intervention needs aren't being met. So the message is certainly that every campus has to work really purposefully to build their tiered systems. We have paired with the district the past two years. The first school year in 1516, we worked really on what we call our Tier 1 systems training. We trained campus teams. We did some training for all district staff in just the basics of human behavior and how that works and how we can apply it in schools. And then we did a program review to kind of see where are we with implementation. And then this past school year, we layered on Tier 2, really starting to talk about intervention for students as they struggle with behavior, adding in some pieces of software to help make some more database decisions for our kids, and then certainly continuing with that program review, which I'm gonna give you some details on now. In terms of measuring success of your behavior systems, there's lots of things you can look at, and so I'm just gonna talk about one small measure, which is the fidelity with which those systems are in place. One of the things the program review looks for is the fidelity of those components that we train to campus teams and also that we have alignment across the district. Because one of the things we really know is critical is that as students transition, whether we're talking about those vertical transitions from year to year as they move into middle school and high school, but also transitions as students oftentimes move from campus to campus, for instance, in elementary schools. We want to have alignment across those campuses so that students lose less of that instructional time due to not understanding the expectations as they go. We do not look at, in that program review, teacher quality. We're not looking at every individual teacher and how well they implement the system themselves. We don't look at student behavior. Certainly, we have other measures you can look at in terms of how often certain offenses are happening, but we're not out there with enough breadth to be able to measure the exact student behaviors. And the depth of understanding, just meaning, we've done a lot of training with staff, but certainly, implementation of a system and understanding the reasons behind it take a little bit of time. So we're really working with the district in continuing that training to make sure our teachers understand really well how to utilize those behavioral tools. I'm gonna show you some data up here. I know you have some data as well in the presentation there that shows it broken out a couple different ways, but one of the things I wanted to show you was actually fidelity overall at each campus. Now, this is Tier 1 systems, meaning what are we putting in place for all kids? It includes the teaching of school-wide expectations, safe, respectful, responsible, how we respond when students show those expectations, and certainly, how we respond when they don't show those expectations. As you can see from the graph up here, 80% is really the quality with which we want to see those systems implemented and to know that it's really well put into place. And we have multiple schools in the district that have hit that fidelity after just two years. This is really key. It typically takes a lot of schools two to three years to get to fidelity and sometimes further because we know there's a lot of initiatives and things happening on a campus. So currently, we have three of the campuses in the district doing that, and another six... are within 10 points, meaning they really have many of those components in place, and they're working really hard. Overall, the district is hitting 73% fidelity, which is an increase from where it was last year. And so we continue to see those Tier One Systems kind of moving along and hopefully ultimately having a positive impact on our kiddos. Now, this year was the first year we implemented Tier Two Systems, which I'm going to talk about in just a little bit. And so it's important to know that these Tier One Systems, while they were in place with 70% fidelity, also had that added challenge of having additional things to start implementing this year. And so they were able to maintain or, in some cases, increase, which is excellent. We see quality practices across the board at all your campuses. All of them have really well established the verbiage of "safe, respectful, responsible." I hope if you guys have visited those campuses, you've heard that verbiage being said. They've all shown maintenance or growth on almost all campuses, and you have now several campuses that really can serve as model campuses among the district, as well as when we have people that contact us asking who's doing it well. We have several campuses here that we proudly say are really good models of how that should be put into place. In terms of suggestions for the future, we have several things that we're working with. Some of your district curriculum focuses on that idea of how to continue maintenance within the district, because certainly, our hope is not that you guys have to forever work with us, but that eventually, a lot of these systems are maintained within the district on a well-established basis. In terms of Tier Two, one of the most exciting things is, again, keep in mind that 80% is the fidelity we're looking for, and after the first year of implementation on all the campuses we've implemented on, we're at 60% or above, which is awesome. So that means everybody has put into place some big pieces of intervention when it comes to behavioral need. Several campuses, Crockett and De Zavala, have hit their 80% fidelity already in the first year, meaning they have some good behavioral interventions in place for those kids that fall into that at-risk category. And then several more campuses are also within that 10-point range. Overall, the district is hitting just above 70%, which is very exciting. You have two campuses that are excluded from that dataset because both the high school and the Phoenix campuses have not implemented Tier Two. For Phoenix, they just haven't had a subset of kids yet in need of it. And for the high school, we're still working on Tier One Systems. So we chose to kind of wait a year before we wanted to move forward with Tier Two. In terms of quality practices, again, all those elementary and middle schools having strong practices in place, they're using really good data tools to make decisions. You can see a small screenshot there on the bottom right, just showing kind of progress of a student in collecting data over time. And then several of those campuses hitting fidelity already in that first year of implementation is exciting. For suggested actions, many of the things San Marcos will need to continue to develop when you're talking about behavior interventions are things that a lot of districts struggle with initially. That idea of, once we have kids into intervention, how do we make decisions to move them out of intervention or to increase intervention is certainly something that a lot of districts are now creating guidelines and flow charts, and so that's kind of a natural state to be in. It's exciting to have the interventions in place, and now, of course, all the parameters around them start to be some of the areas to continue to refine. That's all I have for you in terms of the data. Do you have any questions for me related to this?
Thank you. I think this is very helpful, and I notice a lot of these mechanisms coming home with my own children, and I appreciate that. I'm wondering, though, about how we evaluate the fidelity when it comes down to the individual level. So I can see that we can see it implemented through classroom materials or through hallway materials, through handouts, et cetera, on the folders, et cetera. But are the principals going around and evaluating teachers? And how is that happening?
Yeah, no, I can talk a little to that. I can't talk to specifically some of the things you guys have in place as a district, guidelines for principals. That'll be something you guys can speak to a little bit better. But when we do our fidelity monitoring, we're looking at snapshot data. We spend a day on campus going into classrooms for three to five minutes each, and the things we're looking for in classrooms are things like, what is the acknowledgement-to-correction ratio? Meaning, how many times am I hearing teachers acknowledge and pay attention to the behaviors they want to see for every time I hear them correct a behavior that they need to correct? I'm also looking for the engagement of students, because certainly, behavior engagement in the activities makes a huge difference. So we're looking for classroom engagement and how many students are on task doing exactly what the teacher's been looking for during that time. We also look for just evidence posted throughout the room that we have the expectations, that we refer to them throughout the day as necessary. And so in those snapshot data collection, we get that idea of how they're doing overall in the school. Certainly, principals spend much longer in there, and so they can speak a little bit more to how they evaluate.
This is based on your observations?
Yes, that is based on our observations.
Any other questions?
This may be more from Ms. Ruiz Mills. Excellent presentation. Thank you. I was just wondering if we knew, if we had an indication why the high school was lagging in implementation? Is it a matter of training? Is it a matter of buy-in?
It was a matter of training. When Emergentree came to San Marcos, we started with the elementary schools and the middle schools, and so it was just a matter of training the faculty and training the administration altogether. So we implemented that this year, and we're going to stay with Tier One one additional year.
Okay. And at this point, what portion of the high school faculty has received the Emergentree training?
Dr. Turnbull.
Probably less than 10%.
Yeah, less than 10% right now. It's been a matter of buying in as we get into the secondary campuses.
So it's still voluntary on the part of the individual educator to make that decision?
Not for next year. For this upcoming year, everyone will be trained.
Okay.
So the first 10% were volunteers into it, then?
Yes.
Okay.
I just was following up, because that was my same question regarding the high school. Specifically, when we're looking at Tier Two, it's at-risk students. So basically, my understanding is that these 10% were volunteers, the rest of them are the second-year, have no choice but to take this training?
Yes, and we have the training already set up for the August professional development.
Was this the same process that was implemented at the elementary level and at the middle school? That it was open to anybody and not really a volunteer, I mean, have-to-do thing?
It was open to everybody, and it was the district's initiative that we would all participate. And so it just took a little while longer to get...
So those teachers bought in into it? It's just one campus that we have that did not?
Yes.
So were those 10% that already had the training help in training the other teachers? Okay. Thank you. All right. Thanks.
Madam President, as we, you know, you can keep going. As we queue up the dual-language presentation, I'm going to ask, after our reports and information items, and if there's no objections, that we move up items 8D and 8J. I think that's the clerical employee raise and then the school site selection, just because I think a lot of people in the audience are here for those two particular issues. So rather than keep them here late with us, maybe we can, you know, be mindful of their time as well. So...
Are you all good with that? Are you all good with moving it up?
After the presentation.
Yeah, after the three: Emergentree, Dual, and STAR. You?
Yes.
I think...
I'm not opposed.
I'd like to have the STAR presentation first.
Yeah, the three.
Well, we're going to have Dual, Language, and STAR.
Okay. Then I'm fine. You're okay? Yeah. After we do that, though, can we take a break and then do the after presentation, please? Absolutely.
Okay. So next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Madiel Fedon. He's our dual-language consultant and has been working collaboratively with Mr. Ben Grealva, our Director of Bilingual and English Language Learners. Dr. Fedon currently works in San Antonio Independent School District and serves as a dual-language consultant in the surrounding areas in Austin ISD. After reading his dissertation and knowing his work, his claim to fame was when they developed the dual-language program at PSJA in the Valley. So I bring to you Dr. Madiel Fedon.
KJ?
Thank you, and good afternoon. Thank you for being here. Thank you for allowing me to be here. And I'm here to talk a little bit about dual-language instruction and the challenges, the benefits, and the possibilities that implementing a dual-language program might bring to San Marcos ISD. So the first thing that I want to mention is that there seems to be a growing dissonance between what research has proven about the effectiveness of bilingual education and key best practices, the policies that the state and the communities have developed for the implementation of bilingual programs, and the practices that we tend to observe in the classroom. There seems to be this growing discordance, this growing lack of communication between research and practice. So one thing that we try is to bring all these three elements into congruence so we can have a sustainable and successful program implementation. So one thing that you're going to see during my presentation is that it's thoroughly supported by empirical evidence. So why we need to change? Well, I think that the key argument to changing a bilingual program is effectiveness, program effectiveness. Unfortunately, across the nation and across the state, traditional bilingual programs have proven unsuccessful in closing the achievement gaps. I mean, this is evident in almost every index core in Texas, almost in every school district in Texas and in the United States. Two basic areas of causation is how the programs have been perceived for decades. For decades, we have implemented these programs based in two basic tenets. We call them remedial, because we perceive the home language of these students as a problem, as a problem that needs to be solved. They were born with the wrong language, and we're going to remedy that by, just this example of taking away the battery of a car, one on working battery, and replacing it with a good one. That's what we try to do with the language of our students, take away what we see as a defective language and endow them with the language of success, English. Unfortunately, what this can cause is it can hinder or at least delay content knowledge development for these students. And we are the only country in the world that has a bilingual program in place that does not aim for the students to become bilingual. We call it bilingual program, but the aim is only to develop English language and not bilingual. So at the same time, dual language is not new. It has been around for almost five decades, and it has proven highly successful for the education, not only for bilingual students or English learners, but for all students in general. Why? Because it's an enrichment program, not a remedial program. Second, it tends to integrate students. Bilingual education tends to segregate students. We place our English learners in classrooms segregated from the mainstream student. And of course, the big difference is that dual language aims to develop both languages, not only one. So at the end, the benefit, it's not only for the student, but it can bring socioeconomic conditions to all our communities, because by increasing the academic attainment of our students, it increases the level of income of our students that was a concern. It increases high levels of tax revenue that at the end closes deficits for institutions like school districts and generate overall economic development. So it's a win-win relationship. Now, why we have been implementing remedial education, bilingual education, for five decades? Because we have been supported by something that is called the English as the Language of Success hypothesis. And I also call it the English in Barrera hypothesis. Why? Because it claims that to be successful in this country, you have to learn English. And don't take me wrong, yes, our students need to learn English. The question is, what is the price they need to pay for that acquisition of a language? How many of our students end up not only losing their first language? Because that's a significant problem. They lose that first language. But at the same time, they also lose identity, because they are renouncing to a key element of their culture. Language is the backbone of a culture. If we deprive our students the opportunity to develop their first language, we're also depriving them the opportunity to develop stronger bonds with their cultural backgrounds. This generates also a problem of self-esteem. If I portray my home language as deficient and therefore portray my home culture as deficient, I portray my family as deficient, and therefore, I portray myself as deficient. That's why we can see a lot of limited self-esteem or low self-esteem levels in our Hispanic community across the state. And of course, as we mentioned before, academic performance. So it's really true that our students need to pay this price just to acquire a second language. And all this is based in an hypothesis that was actually very popular 20 years ago, when California moved into eradicating bilingual education in California. The so-called time-on-task hypothesis that claims that the academic performance of linguistic minorities, let's say, Spanish speakers, is hindered when valuable instructional time is wasted providing instruction in a language other than English. 20 years later, we know that the time-on-task hypothesis was wrong. California had to backtrack that decision, and now, just six months ago, decided to reinstate bilingual education, because they've proven that that decision was not positive. Now, let's see what research has thoroughly proven. If you haven't seen this graph, this is what we call the Thomas and Collier graph. The Thomas and Collier Research Group has been analyzing the academic performance, the linguistic development performance of English language learners for more than 30 years over 25 states in the United States. The research includes more than 8 million students. So it's one of the most thorough, largest research studies conducted in education in the United States. And what this graph shows is the academic performance in reading, all this is in reading, for English learners across their 11 years or 12 years of study. So this is a normative study. The red line represents the norm, or should I say, the average native English-speaking student in the United States. That's why it's in the 50 percentile. It's the average student. Normally, English learners will start their elementary education between the zero percentage of English proficiency to the 10%, and then move up. The graph shows how the students perform in the seven different programs recognized by Chapter 89 in the Texas legislation. The first one, the bottom one, the no services, actually, it's not a program, it's just placing students in a regular mainstream classroom without services. It's so negative that actually, the state prohibits it, and the only way to obtain that program is for parents to waive their privilege of having bilingual services. So one thing that you will find in common in this graph is, first of all, during the first three years, English acquisition is technically the same regardless of the program of instruction. Why? Because what children are acquiring is basic interpersonal communication skills. And they are acquiring not only through classroom instruction, but through socialization with more proficient English speakers. Things that we actually deprive them from by placing them in a remedial, isolated classroom. Okay? So that's why it doesn't matter if you place the child in an English-only classroom eight hours a day, but socializing only with also other English learners who have the same or similar limited English proficiency, or if you place them in a dual-language environment where they will be socializing and acquiring naturally that second language through socialization with more efficient peers. So regardless of the program that you choose, during the first three years, there will be no difference. But what happens beyond third grade? And many educators know this phrase, that from pre-k to third grade, students learn to read. From third grade and beyond, students read to learn. So how effective... So how effective we are really being in allowing our students to reach reading proficiency by third grade? So that's what the program, or the difference in programs show. The three weakest programs are those who are entirely provided in English. So if you can see no services, that means placing them in an English-only environment with no support, or ESL pull-out, or ESL content-based are the three with the lowest long-range, long-term performance. So that means that immersing students in English only is not the answer. Actually, the more you provide home language support, seems to be more effective in the long range. So early exit, that is the next one with a little bit higher efficacy, provides some home language support in the early grades, and technically that was, has been provided in San Marcos and in many other school districts around the state. Then we have late exit, that keeps the home language all the way into fifth grade, home language instruction to fifth grade. But the only two programs that have proven to be successful in closing the achievement gap, getting up or beyond the 50 percentile, are one-way and two-way dual-language programs. So according to Thomas and Collier and this 8 million research study, the best predictor for long-term success in English, for English learners, is the extension and quality of instruction in the first language. So we need to support first language acquisition for our English learners. Why? Many reasons. According to Krashen, as I mentioned before, a second language is acquired, big difference between learning and acquisition, through an extensive exposure in social models, in natural and meaningful conditions, and even without the need of structured instruction. We don't need to teach them English, we need to let them acquire English naturally. And it takes time, and we're going to see that. The second part is the effective filter of the same theory that claims that anxiety, frustration, and boredom can block knowledge acquisition. And that's what happens in many of these ESL classrooms or English-delivered classrooms for English learners. They're placed in an environment that they can make no sense of. So the student is either frustrated or bored, and that's where misbehavior begins, right? Okay? So if we really want to engage these students in the learning process, we need to provide them with an instruction that is meaningful for them, and what more meaningful than providing them with part of their instruction in their home language? Now, this next theory, this next hypothesis, is perhaps the most challenging because actually it rounds counter to what we have considered about English acquisition. Because we have thought that the more English we provide to our students, the faster they will learn English. And that's not necessarily true. The only thing that we do by immersing them in English is increasing the level of frustration and anxiety. In fact, what Cummins claims is that there is this interdependence development between the two languages. So competence in the second language, and this is English for our English learners, competence in English is dependent upon competence in the first language. The more we develop the first language, the easier and faster the second language will develop. Technically speaking, if we really want our English learners to learn English, we need to develop their first language, we need to develop their Spanish. And the more we develop their Spanish, the easier and faster they will learn English. Okay? The second common line under proficiency is very simple, we only have one brain. So it doesn't matter if we're receiving information in one language or we're receiving information in the second language, it's all being stored in the same brain. Okay? So if we acquire a concept through Spanish, we're not wasting time, we're learning it more thoroughly. Okay? And by the time, if we provide the students, and that's the trick that a lot of bilingual education programs don't provide, is providing the corresponding vocabulary. So we are teaching concepts in Spanish, but providing the meta-language connections so the student is learning the concept in Spanish and at the same time developing connections with the English vocabulary. We don't have to teach them the concept again. Okay? And here's the most important claim of these two theories together. First language development, by developing their first language, we're not only developing language, we're developing their entire cognitive system. The cognitive system is set during the first four years of age. So if the student has been receiving home language for four years, their cognitive system is already set in place in that home language. If we try to rewire that cognitive system by taking out the first language and endowing them with a second language, actually, we are just trastocating the entire cognitive system rather than supporting English language acquisition. So let me explain this with this graph, I think it will make a lot of sense. Learning a language takes time. And every language has two basic registers. One that is called basic interpersonal communicative skills, it's the hi, how are you, fine, thank you, and you, como estas, bien gracias. That's BICS. That's the language that we speak at home, or that we speak with our friends, or with our family. And that language takes from one to three years to develop, either for the first language or for the second language. It will take exactly the same time because it's how it takes a brain to process that language and to make that concept relationship between the word and the concept. So let's say, learning Chinese, how many of you speak Chinese? Not many? Good. If we take you right now to China, you're going to be in trouble. Probably you're going to be suffering some hunger for the first couple of days. But after a year, you will have some basic communication skills. You will be able to maintain a basic communication. And after three years, you will be very fluent in Chinese. And it's a complicated language. It's a complex language. However, if after those three years that you have already developed strong fluency in Chinese, I place you in an algebra class or chemistry class delivered entirely in Chinese, you're not going to make any sense in that class. Why? Because you don't have the academic language. The academic language, it's a more complex language, and it takes from four to seven years to develop. So the same that happens in Chinese happens if you're moving from Spanish to English. So for our Spanish speakers, it takes from one to three years to develop BICS, fluency in conversational skills. Yes, Juanito speaks English, but if we place Juanito in an English-only-delivered academic class in third grade or fourth grade, Juanito will not have enough cognitive academic language proficiency to make sense of what is happening in that class. But that's what we're doing to many of our English learners. We're moving them into English-only instruction after one, two, or at the most, three years, when research actually is telling us it's not a good measure. It takes from four to seven years. Okay? We already mentioned that third-grade rule that students need to read on level by third grade, otherwise they can struggle academically in the future. And now, we have an additional challenge. It's called critical thinking. And as educators, you know that that's a big difference between STAAR and TACs. I was in a school a few days ago, and the principal was telling about how great their scores were in bilingual education five years ago, but she didn't know why during the past five years, their scores for English learners had decreased so terribly. I told her, very simple, five letters, S-T-A-A-R, STAAR. Right? What happens is that STAAR requires more critical thinking than TACs used to require. TACs was a memorization test. So students can memorize the answers and just regurgitate them during the testing process and pass the test and fail in high school. Now, STAAR is requiring these students to think, to critically think, and that's a skill that is totally related with language. So here's what people don't seem to understand with bilingual education, or with education in general. When does a person start developing BICS in their first language?
As soon as they're born.
As soon as they're born? Great! And after a year, around the age of one year, the children start generating their first words.
Words.
Their first words, correct? And by the age of three, the problem is not for children to speak, it's more for them to keep quiet, isn't it? I have a three-year-old grandson. So now they have the communicative skills, and many parents start providing them with cognitive academic language proficiency. You start teaching them the colors, the numbers, the letters. Then they get into our schools, and we pick up, and we continue this academic development. And by the time they reach this seven-year-old, between the seven and eight-years-old, then they have to face their first STAAR test in third grade. So if everything has been placed, has been done correctly, the child will develop BICS in three years, will develop CALP in four. By the age of seven, they are reading on level, they hit what we call literacy in their first language, and now they have that academic vocabulary that will allow them to merge two simple ideas, two simple concepts, into a more complex concept that is the basic skill for critical thinking. But to do critical thinking, they need that vocabulary, that academic vocabulary. Otherwise, they don't understand those basic concepts. And to develop that academic vocabulary, they need those seven years of exposure to BICS and CALP. This tends to happen with English-speaking families. But what happens to second-language learners? Do they develop BICS when they are born? Do they start developing BICS the day they are born?
Sure.
Sure. In what language?
Whatever their native language is.
In their first language, correct?
Yeah.
By the age of three, are they fluent in that first language?
Yes.
Yes. Many parents, second-language parents, English learner parents, they start teaching their kids the colors, the numbers, the days of the week. In what language?
Their language.
In their first language. But then the child enters our school between the ages of four-year-old and six-year-old, and what happens? We interrupt Spanish proficiency development. Why? Oh, because what these kids need is English, and we start teaching them English. So Spanish is halted. We start the process of teaching them English, but it takes time. So what's going to happen when the student reaches third grade? Is he going to be able to read in English? Why not? Not enough time of exposure, correct? But will they be able to read in Spanish?
No.
No? Why?
They haven't been taught.
They haven't been taught. You see, we're setting our children for failure. That's what has been happening with early exit or English-only instruction. What dual language does is very simple. If the parents are teaching them Spanish at home and developing BICS at home, by the time they go into our schools, we continue intentionally developing that first language. So by the time the student reaches third grade, there's no excuse why that student should not be able to read on level in Spanish, not in English. So these students will be able to read on level in third grade. And because they are reading on level in third grade, they will be able to start developing critical thinking skills. But critical thinking skills, even though they will develop them in Spanish, skill is a skill, it's like riding a bike. I was born and raised in Mexico, so I learned to ride a bike in Spanish. When I came to the United States, I didn't have to learn how to ride a bike again in English, right? A bike is a bike. So a critical thinking skill is a critical thinking skill. You develop that skill. What happens with your English? Well, the time they enter our schools, we start that natural process of acquisition of English. So by the time they hit fifth grade, now they have been exposed around those seven years of exposure, and now they will have enough literacy in both languages to be successful in the middle school and high school levels. So how many times we have heard about this so-called bilingual edge? We can go through the web, surf the web, and we're going to find hundreds of pages talking about the benefits of being bilingual. Do you agree with that? Let me pose it in a very simple question, is being bilingual good or bad?
It's good.
It's great.
Good?
Good.
Well, what if I say no? Not necessarily. Actually, being bilingual can be really detrimental. And the president of the board is looking at me as like, I thought you were defending bilingual education. Yeah. Well, let's be very honest. If bilingual per se was good, why are bilingual students are failing in high school? Right? Well, the problem is very simple. What we have been generating for five decades in Texas and in the United States is what Cummins called the first-level bilingual. A student that develops their first language, but then stagnates in the first language, they leave their first language behind, and then they start developing that second language. But remember that I mentioned, the second language development is dependent upon the first language development. If the first language stagnates, the second language can stagnate too. That's why we have a lot of our bilingual students failing in high school. Yes, they are bilingual, they can speak, they can communicate in Spanish, they can communicate in English. Can they read a high school textbook in English or in Spanish? No, they can't. That's why they start failing. And according to Cummins' traditional hypothesis, the problem is that not only this stagnates their linguistic skills, remember, it also stagnates their cognitive
Skills.
Development. Okay? So a limited proficiency in both languages can generate negative cognitive effects. However, what happens if we develop full proficiency in both languages? The opposite. If we develop full proficiency in both languages, it's then, and only then, when can generate positive cognitive effects. So if we really want to make our students successful, we need to provide them the opportunity to develop both languages. And this is an opportunity that we can provide to all our students, not only to our English learners. And let me move a little bit forward. If someone asks you, what is the goal of dual language? The goal of dual language is not to develop two languages. The goal of dual language is to develop stronger cognitive and academic skills in our students through the development of on-level bilingualism and bilinguality. Additional benefits: higher levels of self-esteem, cultural pride, intercultural understanding, and collaboration. And we have been doing this for five decades, sorry, for two decades in San Juan Alamo. This is what the program will look in the near future in San Marcos. At the early grades, in pre-k to fifth grade, the aim is to develop bilinguality. But once we move the program into the middle school, the aim is to develop full proficiency, college proficiency, college-level proficiency in Spanish. So the students will be taking the Spanish Language AP, Advanced Placement Test, in eighth grade and earning up to their first 12 college credit hours even before they set foot in the high school. And then by the time they get to high school, they will continue developing that literacy both in English and in Spanish. So by the time they finish high school, they will finish with a minor in Spanish.
Is this happening in PSJA?
This is what's happening in PSJA, and this is, my dissertation This is what's happening in PSJA, and this is, my dissertation was mentioned. My dissertation was done in, I did my dissertation in 2011 analyzing the process of education of 1,365 students in PSJA, all of them Hispanic. PSJA is located among one of the poorest districts in the state of Texas. So these students were all Hispanics, they were all coming from the same neighborhoods, they were all had been educated in the same schools. The only difference was the program and the language of instruction. Students in PSJA, 22 years ago, the parents can enroll if they were native English speakers in blue. The parents could decide, can choose between enrolling their kids in the dual-language program or in the mainstream English-only program. For native Spanish speakers, they can choose between dual-language as native Spanish speakers or transitional bilingual. And this is what happened 12 years later. Keep in mind the colors. Do you remember who wore the light blue? Native English speakers in transitional bilingual, right? No, I'm sorry, native English speakers in dual language. And see how these native English speakers outperform their native English peers, native English-speaking peers enrolled in mainstream. So even though these students were wasting time learning academic concepts in Spanish, they ended up outperforming the students in what was the first test? Oh, yes, English Language Arts. So they developed stronger English Language Arts even though that they didn't receive such a thorough instruction in English. But see what happened with the Spanish speakers participating in dual language. They actually also outperformed their native English-speaking peers in mainstream. So they were doing way better. And of course, unfortunately, we had that fourth column that was native Spanish speakers in transitional bilingual education. And as for decades has happened, they exhibit a dramatic underperformance in math, science, social studies. But it was not only about passing a test, it was about graduating. PSJA last May graduated their ninth consecutive cohort with 100% graduation rate for nine consecutive years in dual language. Participation in top 10%. Participation in AP tests. And according to the federal government, a successful participation in an advanced placement course is the most reliable indicator of college readiness. And at the beginning of this presentation, you were celebrating how your valedictorians and salutatorians are going to prestigious colleges. This is what you want, your students to be college-ready. And perhaps this is the saddest of the graphs in my presentation, because for me, it was even a cultural shock. As I mentioned in my presentation, I come from PSJA School District that is one of the poorest school districts in Texas. Reason why our district provides free test-taking, the admission college test for, admission to college, ACT, the students can take it for free up to three times during their four years of high school education, for free. And what happened here? More than 50% of the Hispanic students, native English speakers, didn't take the test, and more than 50% of the Spanish speakers in the transitional bilingual programs didn't take the test. And that was a shock for me, because I'm Mexican, I come from a culture that if it's free, take it, right? We go to the, agarralo, I wanna. See, I know.
That's right.
So I asked these kids, what happened? I mean, it was for free, why you never took the test? And the most common answer in 82% of the cases was, I don't feel that I am worth to go to college. I don't feel that I'm gonna be successful in college. What have we done to these students? So that's what dual language can bring. Now, of course, it demands a faithful implementation, the adoption of a five-core curriculum. Why is a five-core? Because Spanish becomes a core. It's not an elective. Students must take a Spanish Language Arts course every year from pre-k all the way up to 12th grade. And of course implies a paradigm shift. Many stakeholders need to experience a change in regards to their perceptions about bilingual education and the role of Spanish in the community. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Dr. Ferron.
Yes.
Playing devil's advocate here, on page, I'm not sure where there's, yeah, page 34, where you talk about developmental interdependence.
Yes.
And like I said, playing devil's advocate, the more you develop the first language, the easier and the faster the second language will develop. And asking the question from the perspective of that person who is not sold on dual language. Could you expand on this? Because I, for one, support dual language, but there are a lot of people that would just think the opposite when you're talking about if you emphasize that first language and acquiring that first language and really understanding and comprehending it, how is that going to work into the second language? And my question would follow up with, okay, you're talking about these students that are going to college and they're taking their test in Spanish, the ACT. Do they, did they ever, at what level did they acquire the English proficiency as well?
By the end of fifth grade, most of the students showed an average proficiency in both, in both languages, okay? However, how does the development of Spanish impact? And this is true for both, native English speakers and native Spanish speakers. Let's keep in mind that the academic language, especially the academic language at the middle school and high school level, is highly dependent or highly based on words that are not English-rooted. They're not, they're not coming from an Anglo-Saxon language. They have Greek or Latin roots, correct?
Yes.
So first of all, those words, they, in most of the cases, they're cognates. They have the same or similar pronunciation and writing, both in English and in Spanish. Libertad, liberty, democracia, democracy, republicanism, republicanism. So the big difference is that when a student develops Spanish CALP or BICS, basic interpersonal communication skills, basic skills in Spanish, about 80% of the basic skills in Spanish, language skills in Spanish, are rooted in Greek or Latin words. 80% of the basic interpersonal communication skills in English are based in Anglo-Saxon roots. So when a student is educated only in English, they don't develop this connection to the academic wording. That's why when they go to middle school or beyond fourth grade, they face what they call these big words, republicanism, oh my God, six syllables, okay? They are shocked, because they're not used to that kind of words. In Spanish, you are more used, two long words, okay? So when the students develop BICS in Spanish, it's a lot easier for them to make that relationship by the time they get to middle school and high school. Now, the second thing is that when you're learning in two languages, you develop navigational skills in two languages. Right now, I have to focus in English, because I can do the same presentation in Spanish. So I have, because I'm, considering that this presentation, most of the participants are more proficient in English, I have to focus in English, because they have those two languages. So that's what is called metalingual proficiency. Metalingual is to know about language. So language is one of those skills that becomes so natural that we don't tend to think about it. It's like walking. You never think about how many muscles you have to move to move forward one step, right? You just do it naturally. The same happens when you're speaking just one language. You don't focus in the language, but when you have to navigate between two languages, you have to focus in language more, and that develops these language skills. So bilingual individuals, full-proficient bilingual individuals, tend to develop different cognition skills that provide them with this edge in cognitive development.
I just have one more question. I have several questions, but I'm just gonna ask one question in general. What is the percentage of students that take their college preparation test?
AP?
In the AP or take the SAT or ACT, and what language do they take it in?
ACT is only in English.
Okay. They don't have, no, I asked because you talk about here, you mentioned.
Once you move beyond middle school, everything is in English.
Okay.
Except the AP Spanish.
Well, I think you mentioned, you put on here, Spanish, I'm trying to think, look at the page here. So that was, I was trying to think, where did that happen? Yeah.
Yeah, the AP Spanish, all students will take the AP Spanish, all dual-language students, regardless if they're native English speakers or native Spanish speakers, all of them will take the AP course and test in eighth grade. And the expectation is that at least 85% should pass that test in eighth grade. And if they don't pass the test in eighth grade, then we have that same course in ninth grade, because the, the goal is, one of our milestones in dual language is that students must pass the Spanish AP test by ninth grade. Because then they have to take the Spanish literature test, and then they continue taking those other college-level courses.
Ms. Falsi?
Thank you so much for this presentation. Your research is extraordinary, and I think we've heard some of this before, but not to this extent. And it's overwhelmingly persuasive to me that we should have implemented a dual-language program years ago. But given that we're going forward and doing it, I think it's great, and we were doing it on four campuses in the fall, I hope that soon after we will have it at all of our campuses. And so my specific question, though, is, we have a pre-k program with about 400 pre-k students, and we're starting the dual-language program in kindergarten and first grade with that cohort. Should we be backing it up and doing a dual-language program in preschool?
I should say that the earlier we start exposing these students to the academic language in Spanish, the better. And that works both for native English speakers and native Spanish speakers. So yes, in San Antonio ISD, we're having, and PSJA, we have pre-k 3 and pre-k 4 for dual language.
Ms. Reese Mills, did you wanna add to that?
Yes, that's a consideration that we're looking at for the 2018.
Great, thank you. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes, okay. I appreciate your presentation and your research, and I think the board overall is persuaded and has been persuaded that dual lang, a dual-language program will be of benefit to our ESL kids, our native Spanish-speaking kids. But I have a hypothesis that I want you to tell me why it's wrong. I think that when controlling for socioeconomic status, a native English speaker will outperform his peer in a dual-language program if the native English speaker stays out of the dual-language program. And I haven't seen anything in your research that disputes that, because the participation in the ACT test in Far San Juan under a different population, that doesn't persuade me enough, because I don't know what's going on with these kids. I mean, it's so stark that I don't think that the children in the dual language would, if you controlled for all other factors, double in performance in any measure. And participation's kind of a rough measure, right? Because that's just two signs up. So I too am excited about the dual language, but I was hoping for a probably narrower introduction, maybe at two campuses or something, so we could try to do it well, although I hope we do it well everywhere. So tell me what I'm missing, or what can you point me to as to the performance of the native English speakers?
Well, what happens with the native English speakers? And let me clarify that in my research, socioeconomic status was controlled.
Okay.
Okay, so that, those results are considered and controlled.
So in this chart, is it controlled?
Keep in mind that in that chart, you're talking exclusively of English learners. There's no native English speakers in the Thomas and Collier chart.
And did they control for socioeconomic status?
I consider yes, because that's part of the norm for, for a normative research study. And the Thomas and Collier is one of the most acclaimed bilingual studies, so yes.
Okay.
Now, let me elaborate a little bit about what you're saying. Why the students end up, the native English speakers end up outperforming the native Spanish speakers in the dual-language program? Because that's what you can see in my dissertation.
Yes.
Actually, that was one of the claims that some of my peers didn't like about my research, because my research technically shows that the dual-language program closed the academic achievement between bilingual students and English speakers, if the English speakers are participating only in mainstream. But once both native English speakers and native Spanish speakers, then that academic performance gap reappears at a much higher level. The impact depends basically because beyond sixth grade, everything, every test is in English. And the availability of teachers to provide high core content instruction is more limited if you're talking in Spanish. Keep in mind that the program in PSJA, we were providing chemistry AP in Spanish, we were providing physics AP in Spanish, we were providing, of course, the students will take biology in Spanish, even though that the test was gonna be in English, and their performance was way higher than the, than the average mainstream student. But because there was still this unbalance of treatment to the English than to the Spanish, then the native English speakers had this edge, okay? That everything was happening in their home language, especially in the testing process, okay? Because if we were teaching physics AP in Spanish, the students will learn physics in Spanish all year, but the AP test will be in English, okay? So that edge was, that's my, my argument, that that edge is what impacted the results and that give them a little bit of a benefit. That is why it's so important for the school district to really understand the challenge and the commitment with a dual-language program. That really implies the adoption of a five-core curriculum, where you're gonna work thoroughly to be able to provide these students as many opportunities as possible to have this core content high school education available in Spanish, okay? And it's doable. And now we have teachers all over Texas that have that, that capacity to teach core content instruction, high school instruction in, in Spanish.
Hanson, do you have a question?
Yes. Thank you again for your presentation, appreciate it. Just as you explained that native Spanish speakers need to learn how to read in their language, the same should be for native English speakers, should learn to read in their language first. And so my concern, and this may be more towards Ms. Reese Mills and Mr. Grivalda, is how are we going to make sure that that happens for those students? And especially those kids who are learning disabled and dyslexic, because acquisition of language isn't a problem, it's acquisition of mainly of those reading skills, which then also spills over into math and other areas. I wanna understand how we're gonna ensure that those kids, and be able to say that dyslexic and learning-disabled kids can't opt into this program is not okay, that's not an okay choice. Because I have two children, both of them learn Spanish as they were learning English from the lady who took care of them from the time they were six weeks old and up. And the one that has dyslexia can read both languages and speaks fluently in both languages. The one that doesn't didn't continue that. So it's not the acquisition of language, but learning that reading in whatever is their native language first. Because I don't wanna skip third grade or fourth grade and go, oops, English-language kids haven't learned to read English.
Well, what happens, it's, it's very simple. Reading to learn in English implies a wider complexity, because many letters have different sounds, up to 11 different sounds.
Right, that's why it's important to learn that.
While learning to read in Spanish, it's a lot easier, okay? Because there's a almost perfect correlation between letter and sound. So native English speakers, when they learn to read in Spanish, technically, they are learning to read in English. They just have to develop the additional letters. So by providing them instruction, reading instruction in Spanish, you're supporting both languages. Now, why are we providing a more thorough support to the Spanish language? support to the Spanish language are the early grades? It's very simple. Spanish is the language at risk. It's a language at risk for, to be lost by the Spanish speaker and to never be acquired by the English speaker. So we have to provide these students with the opportunity to develop those strong literacy skills in Spanish in the early grades. And one thing that you're going to notice, and of course, we don't have data from San Marcos, but we have data from a variety of school districts across the, across Texas, Houston, PSJ, Dallas, Austin. The students who are in the, the native English speakers who are in the dual language program, they never ha, they never exhibit a, a, a hinder in their English language development. And then by the, by the end of fifth grade, they actually start showing the benefits of dual language. And, and let me also make that claim. It's very important. Dual language, the benefits of dual language are not measurable in the elementary grades. If you're expecting to implement a dual language program and see the benefits of the dual language program by third grade or fourth grade, it's not going to happen. The benefits are starting to be visible by the end of fifth grade or the beginning of sixth grade and are measurable by the end of eighth grade. So by the end of eighth grade, then you're going to see this tremendous success of the dual language program. But dual language, it's a long-term process. It's not a, a, a two, three-year implementation program.
But Mr. Cardona, we know as educators, and me especially as a reading educator, if you're not reading on grade level by third grade, it's very difficult to ever catch up.
We don't have kids right now reading on third grade, so we're trying to do something to be innovative.
I know, but like I said, I'm concerned about those kids who come as native English speakers. I, I'm.
We have them that are not na, they're not proficient right now.
Right. But I don't think this is going to fix that problem. I think there are other interventions. I just want.
We had interventions last year.
We have to look at our teachers who are doing the things, keeping our kids at or above grade level and implement that across the board.
Yeah, but I don't think we're talking about those kids. I think the, the kids we're putting into the dual language. And the teachers that we have there are very specifically chosen. Again, let me go back to, we're talking about four campuses, roughly eight classrooms with about 22 kids, 88 kids, 88 to 100, we'll say. So I think we're putting a program in place that I think is, we're going to have fidelity because Benjamin has been working long and hard on this. And our teachers and our principals are leading this. We haven't had any population of kid right now being serviced. And we're trying to get started to do something to address, I think, something that will help both populations of kids. That's the reality. And I mean, part of being an organization that's going to grow is let's try it, right? And then we'll adjust next year to support our teachers and our administrators. I mean, our instructional leaders are, the four campuses, those principals are completely 1,000% behind supporting their teachers. And so is Benjamin, so is Monica. I don't think any one of us want to see this thing fail. Because when we fail, kids fail.
Yeah, I'm not saying that. I just want you to know, I'm going to be checking this all along because I have concerns for those kids who struggle in learning to read English, being taught not in their native language, just like the opposite with Spanish speaking dominant kids, learning to read in English. It's the same problem. We're just switching the problem.
Well, Ms. Coste, yes.
Thank you, Kathy. And I, I understand exactly what you're saying. I mean, we've been both sitting here and looking at scores for some time. But I, I think we're, this is an issue of apples and oranges here. I think that we need to concentrate on that particular population that you're talking about. And this is another population that, that is another focal point. So it's a matter of not letting anybody off the wagon.
No, I'm not saying.
Making sure that everybody stays on and that those needs are identifiable and that they're followed up. And by telling the superintendent, if there's something that we need to do, look at our budget or whatever you need to do for resources, then you need to let us know. Because we don't want any kid to fail.
That's right.
We want that Spanish speaker and that English speaker to be on gr, on reading level of whatever, whatever Spanish or language they're more comfortable with. Because we don't want either one of them to fail. That's the way I see it.
Ms. Falsy?
On the chart up here, doesn't it say that students in kindergarten are going to receive instruction in English language development for 40 minutes a day? And then in first grade, they're going to have English development. I mean, so every kid is going to have language development in both languages.
Twenty percent of, of the day, they will receive English language.
Right. And by third grade, it evens out so that they're receiving the same amount of instruction.
Correct. The end of third grade, it's 50%.
Thank you.
But I don't, of course. But the comparison chart for the native English speakers, all blue, right? Blue, all blue, all blue, all blue. The red's coming from something. And I, I guess, I've just seen programs over the years. Michael already worried about me talking about old times and stuff. But I've seen rollouts before.
Remember, we just went to Tazbe, so.
All right, I've seen rollouts before. And I want to have confidence that this is going to go unprecedentedly well. But it would have to. Because many times we roll out new programs and they struggle. And I, it just seems, and can you, I guess, address, Mr. Cardona, why it's easier to administrate this transition on four campuses instead of a less ambitious number like two? Besides that the campus is wanted, that's not my primary concern. I want to know you as in central office, is this easier for you to roll out on four than two?
Because I worked in a district where we had 42 schools. And I've rolled out programs bigger, three times bigger than this district. And we've had great results. You know, we have, I come from a system in Houston where we had schools that were 99% free and reduced lunch. And they had 137 kids take the AP Spanish language, with 96% of them scoring a three or higher, believe the world average is 65%. So I mean, I've put in programs bigger than this district. And, you know, I don't know, this is something, you know, I'm, I'm not a dual language expert. I just know what works. And what we have been doing hasn't been working. And I came in a year ago and we, it was, we were not doing what was right by kids. And we're getting ready to do something that's right by all kids, including our special ed students in some cases, though some dyslexic kids can't acquire language because mine could not. And they put him in Spanish and he failed. So, you know, I have that also that I think of when I lead, right? And so we're going to look at every kid that we put in there. We're going to support those kids. We're going to support their parents. That's a big key to this that we don't even talk about. There's a big family engagement piece of this with these parents coming in that I think gives us an advantage putting it in with these four campuses. And, you know, just my history with leaders who want to do something, it's going to be successful. If those principals and those teachers are on board, it's going to be successful. It may not be perfect the first year, but it will be successful. And I promise you, it will be more successful than what it is. If you look at our bilingual or ESL data right now, because we fixed the issue and because we provided PD, that's, they're significantly outperformed everybody else. And, and that's just one year of, you know, providing support for the kids and for those teachers. I hear the fear. I hear it in the community when I go to HEB too, they tell me too. But I just, I don't know. I, I don't understand why we don't want to have biliterate kids leaving this area. And I get it.
That's what I'm saying at all.
I get it. No, I, I hear your concern, but I, there is the mindset that if we're doing something new, that's causing us to leave somebody else behind. And I think that's never our intention. Like, we never want to leave any kid behind in doing, this isn't taking away from anybody.
Yeah. I just know in other school districts, my, my sister is a bilingual first grade teacher in Clear, Clear Lake, Clear Lake? No.
Clear Lake, Clear Creek.
Clear Creek, in Houston area. And she does the Spanish part, but she also does, she sends her English speaking kids to an English speaking teacher for the reading part. So that they're, you know, and she's done, you know, they do some switch off.
We have that planned in this.
Okay. Then, then I will be happy.
We have that planned.
Because I, you know, that's my.
I can, I can go get Jay back there, whose daughter or child, grandchild is in a dual language. And he will tell you that the benefits for his own grandchild are immeasurably better.
That's my personal expert is listening to my te, my sister, who's been doing this for a long time.
We're guided by our children.
Yes.
And just so that we understand, this is for native Sp, English speakers, this is a choice.
Oh, yeah.
This is one of the things that I tell parents that have children with disabilities, that a kid, nowhere in any study does it say that a kid with disabilities can't learn another language. Okay?
Right.
Nobody. What they will tell you is that there will be some challenges. And that we need to be aware of that. And that we always give the parent the opportunity to really make that choice. We never push it on anybody. We've been very clear and upfront about that. And so with those parents that have elected to be part of the program, have, I believe, have, have more information now that they can really make a decision that it's a good, sound decision.
One more follow-up for Mr. Yalb.
Yes, sir.
So do we also then have bilingual educators and administrators on the campus, teaching PE and assistant principals and principals? And, and tell me about that?
Yes. Currently, we have Spanish speaker administrator, other than Bowie. But they have teachers who can translate to parents at any time. We have dyslexia services that are offered also in Spanish as well as in English. Your question as far as having the personnel and the staffing for it, we are literally almost two staff for our dual language program for next year. I really don't anticipate any issues with staffing or having people translate if, if, if it's necessary at the campus level.
But the specials classes is going to be the language acquisition of English. So music and PE, that's where we develop our English language. And when students go home, and the parents are part of this engagement, at home is where you read and you speak to them and help them in their homework in their native language. So you're developing both languages at the same time. We'll have a series of community meetings again starting in the fall. You're more than welcome to come to the PD that we're offering in the summer and participate in that. That way you'll get to see how that whole system is implemented.
Ms. Coste?
I just need to ask, and I think I asked you before, Mr. Superintendent, but I'd like to ask it while I'm here, regarding that some concern had been directed that we were losing bilingual teachers because of the dual language program. And I'd like for you to address that because I think it's important. I just, you know, I know the answer you gave me, but I think it's important that you address that.
We have lost bilingual teachers. One at Bowie is moving to Houston, Texas, where her family is from. So I see Pam back there shaking her head. We have three at Desavala. One is moving into the general ed side. One was promoted actually, so she will be an interventionist. And the other one's husband, or the other one's wife, spouse, is from the valley and was not able to move up here this year. And so they have family issues and so they're making a choice to go back. Hernandez had two. One chose to resign her position, but it was more of an issue around the grade level kindergarten. But now she's back on campus, so we rehired her back. And then they had another teacher who is no longer in bilingual. But no time has anybody left because they don't want to do dual language. That's just simply alternative facts.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. Use some levity there.
Thank you. I'm going to call for a five-minute break. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we go through the agenda and find like?
Meeting again. We're ready to reconvene.
It's totally ridiculous to be the one. I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said though. So what do you say about Monica?
She's going to start her presentation. Please go ahead and give her the floor.
Again, I don't know, remind everyone.
Ms. Reese Mills, can you go ahead and get started, please?
Yes, thank you. All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's on. It's on. Okay. You were given prior to the board meeting starting, just another STAR report. This is based on the end-of-course exams that students took at the high school in May. And it also includes the end-of-course exam of algebra for the middle schools. As you look at that, just again, remember from the last board, last report that was given back in April from the March results, that all of the student groups are now combined into one score. And so that's why you'll see some increases in the testing. Because as one of the bullet points says, STAR, STAR A, and STAR L are now combined into the one test. A couple of shout-outs, as you look at the test data from this, and again, it's all preliminary until it's finalized in August. Tomorrow, we begin our retesting at, for end-of-course exams and for fifth grade and eighth grade. And so that will occur on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Once all of those test results are, come in, then in August, what they do is they combine it with all of the tests already taken, first administration plus the retest. And that's how we get our final scores in August. So that will be the big academic presentation. But some shout-outs for this. If you look at the biology score, we did increase the number of test takers. I'd like to say thank you to the high school staff because we did charge them with that back in August. So we went from 272 biology testers in 2016 to 893. They did have 94% passing in 2016, and we were able to achieve 81%. I think the big kudos also is if you look, we had 138 special education students in that population test this year as opposed to two in 2016 with 54% passing. So that's a big celebration, you know.
That's awesome.
For them, yes. And thank you for, for pushing us to go that direction.
And, sorry, can you just clarify? And so that has to do with the realignment of the course sequencing at the high school in the sciences?
Yes. Yes. So as you look at it, you'll notice, you know, there are some gains. We've showed some gains percentage-wise. And then with the middle schools also in Algebra I, you'll see there is also a lot of green in the approaches standard. Again, this is just a basic report. We did receive some preliminary testing data last week, and we've been compressing those numbers. And if our statistics is correct, as of right now, our prediction for the accountability indexes is we have met all indexes, index one, index two, and index three as a district and with all of our schools. So we do not have any schools that will be categorized as improvement required. So we're still waiting for index four. We'll get to that tomorrow as we just received more data today. And that's where we take our college and career readiness, our ACT, our SAT, we have to go by student, put it into a formula, determine the regression analysis, which will then give us the prediction for index four. So we should have that soon. And then when the state, you know, says now everything's official, which will be in August, we'll have that.
So do we know, the state has changed the indexes, right? In the legislative session, they've narrowed them from five to three. So is that going to be implemented in the letter grade that we will receive in January?
That's the accountability rating. The index one is based on, on all of the entire population taking the test. Index two is growth. Did we show growth among the students between each one of the factors there? And then index three takes your economically disadvantaged and then your two student groups that are at risk for us would be special education and English language learners. For the accountability, they're taking out the, the community and student engagement will no longer be part of that prediction analysis. And then 70%, I think it's going to be index one, two, and three. And then the other 30% is going to factor in part of index four and some other stuff. So that was done, the 82 legislation, and I just got that.
Right. So are you able at this point to predict what that letter grade will be based on these scores?
I should be able to have that prediction probably by the end of next week, once we sit there. A lot of this we're doing by hand. So.
Any other questions for Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes, Ms. Reese Mills, do you have, do you and your group have anything in place to deal with any new initiatives to deal with our stubborn English II scores?
Yes. So with our English, we are, we've gone ahead and we've. So with our English, we are, we've gone ahead and we've implemented some new interventions. We did have some transition this year as far as instructional coaches go. And so with implementing the instructional deans at the high school campus and then bringing in new English instructional coaches and working a lot on the writing, because we've been working on writing and literacy, really believe that we're going to show improvement there. Right now, I believe that there's going to be some improvement. You'll be able to see that this upcoming year, now that we've had a system in place. We're going to be able to keep going down that trajectory and show positive gains. So.
Any other questions? Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. In the break, we agreed to move some of our agenda items to the next month's meeting. That would be 6C, first reading of changes to board policy, GKD. We're also going to move 6E, information on waivers and portables, and 8I, approval of changes to board policy, GKA, local community relations policy area. So those three, we're going to move from today's agenda to the next month's agenda in July. And we're ready for our quarterly investment report.
Yes, if you'll notice on page 50 of your pocket, you'll see the investment for the third quarter. And you'll see the general fund. You can see that rates did go up, and we are now back earning significant amounts. So we earned $114,000, almost $115,000 for the third quarter, which is phenomenal for our general fund. $29,000 for our interest and sinking fund. That's how we repay our debt, so that's good for stakeholders. $553 in our food service account, and then probably another $400 or $500 in all of our other accounts. So right now, we're doing very well in our investments. Any questions? Okay, moving on to page 70, the financial update. Just wanted to give the board an update of where we are, where we look. So when you look at the budget, that is the current budget, the fiscal year-to-date, that is as of May 31st. And so what I did is I took that out to project what that would be for August 31st. And you will see from my projections, we will be up about $4.8 million from what we budgeted. And this projected final does include the budget amendments that are to be approved later on. So I went ahead and updated those numbers in this projection.
And it includes the purchase of the laptops?
Yes.
Questions, anybody? Did y'all care? Thank you. Approval of consent agenda items, approval of minutes for special call board meeting on May 8, 2017, and regular scheduled board meeting on May 15, 2017. There's no personnel action, I don't think. Consider acceptance of donation from Amazon corporate.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Margie, all in favor. Any opposed? No, 7-0. Items for action, consideration approval of resolution authorizing the defeasance of certain portions of the district currently outstanding obligations and other matters related thereto.
Defeasance.
Defeasance.
Yeah. It's okay, she's already called, but I'll wait to move up item.
Okay. That's good. After, before, yeah.
We have our financial advisor, Robert Tejera, along with our bond counsel, Juan Aguilera here, that's going to present. First, it'll be the bond defeasance. This is going to be where we're going to pay down some of our debt. And the second part will be the issuance of the new bonds for.
Thank you very much. My name is Juan Aguilera with the law firm of Escamia and Ponac, and we serve as the district's bond attorneys. Mr. Tejera will be discussing shortly the mechanics or the information that you will need for the next agenda item, which is, as Karen said, Ms. Griffith was stating, we're considering, the district has done this in the past, paying off some debt, so that's always good. And it's paying off debt with existing monies that the district currently has. So once Mr. Tejera presents his, the information, the specifics, then I will come back and present the resolution.
Good evening, board members. For the record, Robert Tejera is Drayna Hossa, the district's financial advisor. And again, as Mr. Aguilera stated, we're here to discuss the defeasance. And I know the handout that I gave out is the plan of finance for the next item. But if you turn to page two on column J, we incorporated the defeasance on page two of the presentation on column J, starting on row 12, column J, you see a negative amount, about $118,000 all the way down to 2022, negative $922,000 for a total on column J of $3,777,250. That is the defeasance for a portion of the unlimited tax school refunding bonds since 2012, a par amount of $3,395,000. And again, that's a net present value savings of about $145,000. The issuer contribution on column J, row five, is $3,632,000. That is going to be coming from the school district's, I believe, interest and sinking fund account. So with that column on J, those negative amounts are helping the district buy down its existing debt to help layer in the next item or potential whenever it is brought up to the board, the phase-one financing to keep the interest and sinking fund tax rate where we have it currently at roughly .3541 cents. And again, there's maturities of the 2012 refunding, 2019, 2020, and 2022 totaling $3,395.
What's our savings? What's our savings by paying these off, Bernie?
It's on column J, row six, roughly $145,000, 214.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
So we have prepared a resolution, again, similar to what we've done in the past. And so by adopting the resolution as presented, you are directing the staff and the consultants, which would be Mr. Tejera and myself, to go ahead and take all action needed. Number one, we're going to have to have a publication of a notice of defeasance. We're also going to have to set up an escrow for payment of the bonds in the future. And then also, any other things that might be necessary, then you're directing the staff to go and proceed with the defeasance of the bonds.
I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the defeasance of certain portions of the district's currently outstanding obligations and other matters related thereto.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? 7-0. Thank you. Now, did you want to move on?
No, we'll do the second one.
The second one.
The next item on the agenda, and again, while I'm talking here, Mr. Tejera, oh, has already presented, given you the information. I apologize. This is the first tranche of the successful bond election you all had. As you, some of you may recall, back in 2013, the district issued bonds in identical fashion, which is you set up a parameters order, which you, in essence, you're saying, and what we've included in discussions with Ms. Smith-Gryffith, is an amount not to exceed $50 million. That's the first amount we're looking at, principal amount, so that that's the money that's going to be needed for the first phase of the construction. We've included in the order the parameters to go ahead and not to exceed $50 million, that the bonds would have to be paid with not more than 40 years, which I know that you're not thinking about that, but that's the maximum amount that is allowed by law, give you flexibility. And then also, at an interest rate as whatever, lower than whatever the maximum interest rate set by law. So if you authorize the order, if you accept the order, then you will, as you did last time in 2013, authorize the superintendent, the secretary, board secretary, or the chief financial officer, any of those three individuals by themselves to accept the final terms of the bonds, which will be done after we price.
Do you have a question?
I do. So as I understand it, the first school, or the first school scheduled to open in September August of 2019, so I guess construction will probably start like a year before that. Why are we issuing these so early?
There are several portions of that, like we're going to start working on the transportation facility, and hopefully that will start, the construction of that will start early. We have construction design docs. There's a lot of other fees that go in. We are going to go ahead and start some of the other implementation of the things that we had said, like the, no, but the energy savings and also the, what's the other one? On the, oh, the Wi-Fi, all the Wi-Fi stuff that was presented, all that stuff, we're going to go ahead and start. Some of that will be started this summer.
Construction at the high school again.
I don't know the.
Construction at the high school.
I think that's next summer.
Okay, and I have a question for the bond counsel. If we spend, some of those were rather negligible amounts in comparison to the total package, can we fund the negligible amounts out of our fund balance and repay ourselves?
Sure. And it requires a reimbursement resolution, just to be on the safe side.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions?
Excuse me, Ms. Costa.
John, what would be the advantage of going that direction?
Well, I think that earlier we issued the bonds, I mean, we're going to start paying on that money before we use it. It's going to go sit in our fund balance. And to me, you know, if it sits there an extra year, that's, you know, whatever we're paying, 4%, I don't know. I was just wondering if there was some sort of market factor that was causing us to go to market early, more than any other question.
Yeah, well, the goal was to minimize the tax rate increase, and by doing the defeasance this year, we would be able to do that if we issued the bonds. And I think that's what we were trying to do, is layer them both together to minimize, actually have no tax rate increase for next year. So if we look at doing something next year or the prior, then we're looking at a true potential tax rate increase from phase one.
Well, a tax rate decrease and then a tax rate increase?
Yes, sir.
In addition, I think we were trying to, you know, some of the tax rates, too, while they were low, before they start going up also.
You mean interest rate. That's right.
Yeah, interest rates also, and I think we had a discussion Friday afternoon last week, where we all know Fed increased the interest rate last week on Wednesday. That was already priced in there. Potentially looking at another one either December of this year, and then they're also calling for potential rate increases in 2018. So they plan to gradually increase the interest rate on the borrowing side. And on the flip side of that, we know the investment interest rate will also be increasing.
Any other questions? I'm going to take a motion.
I move that we approve a plan of finance for the construction and equipment of school buildings and directing district administration and consultants to proceed with the issuance of unlimited tax school building bonds.
I'll second.
Can we also include, I'm sorry, to approve the order?
Oh, excuse me.
As presented. So it's the plan of finance, and also you're directing staff to continue, but to approve the order.
Okay, let me amend it, to approve the order and a plan, and then all the rest.
I'll second.
Maradondo seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Six, all opposed? One.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D.
Going to hold off on approval of budget amendment and pull the next item, consideration of possible approval of general pay increase for clerical, paraprofessional, and manual trades staff, and an increase of district health insurance contributions for all district staff.
Okay. Good evening, board members. We'll start off with the general pay increase information, and we'll end with the healthcare item. Are you all okay with that order?
Sure.
Okay. We provided you, as you can recall, at the May regular board meeting, you've asked administration to delay the recommendation for the clerical professional and our manual trades personnel because you wanted some more options. We have a total of 11 potential options for you to consider. You have a sheet that should be in front of you that has some of the options there. It's a two-pager, okay? So also, you've asked for some additional information that we provided for you on this sheet, provided. The information that you asked for additionally, besides additional general pay options, is you would like to know how many people that were currently employed in our district under each pay grade. And so that's on the far left-hand side. When you look at the pay grade number, the number placed right next to it is the number of people currently employed with us in each pay grade. I know that was information that you requested in May. We've provided these 11 options here. Let me just kind of go through this, if you allow me. This first option here, when looking at, you have the clerical professional on the top, manual trades on the bottom. The first option that you see is a 3% increase of the midpoint. All of these increases for the next three are based on the midpoint, which we talked about as best practice, and that's what TASB recommended as well. So those are three options there. When you see this 1080 step and 1060 step, that's respectively in the manual trades, that was based on a discussion that we had in May, which was regarding the philosophy of potentially moving up all of our salaries to a $12 start in three years. And so the first installment of the three is for clerical professional to be at 1080 and manual trades to be at 1060, okay? And then next year, obviously, we can't commit future boards to anything, but the plan would be for year two to be in the $11 area, and then by year three, we hopefully should be at $12.
Ms. Halsey? I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Hanson?
When you look at the 1080 and 1060, does that not bump up the other steps?
Absolutely. It does. Yes, we just gave you the entry step.
Okay.
Because that was most important at that time, was where we were starting off for this group.
And that's with the plan to be at where in three years?
At $12.
Okay.
And, oh, there's a hand, I'm sorry.
Ms. Halsey?
Yeah, I was wondering, so this breaks out how many employees are in each pay grade, but it doesn't specify how many employees actually make less than $15 an hour.
Okay. We have under how much?
Under $15.
Under $15. We have currently 167 employees in our manual trades group making under $15. And then we have 134 clerical professional employees.
And is there any way for us to determine how many of those employees also have students who attend school in our school district?
I was able to get some information just about the clerical professional, paraprofessional. It was out of our clerical, paraprofessional salary schedule, it's 65 students. And I don't have the auxiliary manual trades, but I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
I make sure I'm following along correctly. So, Mr. Watson, as to the, let's take the flat figures on the far right.
Yes, sir.
The total plans, like for instance, for a dollar, is 803,31, and then the grand total is 2.750. Can you distinguish those numbers for me? Is that, that's additional money we would spend over what?
Over our current budget.
Our current budget. So the 2.7?
Wait a minute.
No, on the bottom, I'm sorry, I did this. It's his.
Okay.
The total plans would be for the clerical and the manual, the grand total includes what you want. what you already approved, the 1.9 for all the professionals in the last one, so that's the total amount of pay raises that you're adding to the bottom line.
2.75 for the $1 and then 2.368.
For the 50 cents.
For the 50 cents. And there would be, I guess, we could achieve the kind of, the direction that we might potentially want to migrate this northward in a three-year scale by first starting with one of the flat increases, correct, Mr. Watson?
Yes, sir, that is correct, but I would encourage you because if, to get up to right now, looking at our minimum, our minimum for our manual trades is 946 an hour, and so to, for the recommended minimum of 1060, if we transition to that in that first installment, that's at least a dollar. So having a raise around that would require less adjustments that would have to be made to get people to that minimum. And so we would encourage you, you know, if you're going to go that direction, to go at least using the dollar flat fee rate or very close to that 5%.
Ms. Halsey?
And the projected state revenue increase next year, that's based only on the state giving us additional money for increasing enrollments and no per student increase, correct?
Yeah, I base, the scenario that you see on the graph, I'm sorry. Was the preliminary that you saw in March, I didn't update anything because I didn't want to confuse you, so this is still based on the old mentality that we're not getting any extra money. So I have none included.
Which is what at this point, before the special session.
Right.
And Karen, I have one follow-up on that point. So that, we're referencing this budget projections. So the, with no increase, you're projecting that we would have about a $1 million surplus?
Correct.
But we've already voted to spend, you know, roughly $2 million in increases. That is, is that factored into that number?
No, I just, what I did was just gave you, because there's been some different, there's been some changes and I didn't want to confuse you, so I gave you the first thing that with no changes, so we know at a minimum, this is what could be, it'll probably be a lot better than this, but I wanted to give you all a starting point, so looking at this, and then you would have to subtract out whatever amount that you took from here, which would be the potential deficit budget. Of course, I need to put in all the factors, but it was just a start.
Right, so just, because I'm still, maybe I misheard you, but for instance, I think we've already approved as a board 1.95 million in increases, and is that, if I were to do simple math, does that mean that this $1 million surplus is really at the moment about a $900,000 deficit?
Correct, yes.
Without spending any money tonight?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Halsey?
I'd like to move that we approve the pay rates for clerical, paraprofessional, and manual trades to a minimum of $15 an hour and make the compression adjustments and that the district cease to administer STAR tests until which point the state returns to special session and gives us the increasing money that we need to meet our increasing cost per student.
I hear a second. Motion dies for lack of a second.
I'll make a motion that we increase the clerical and manual trades, the flat $1 across the board as offered in the general options.
I'll second.
Moving and seconded.
Before we call the vote?
Discussion?
Yeah.
Discussion?
Thank you. Mr. Watson, on the flat rate increase, there have been some, I guess, the minimum step. So is the minimum step achieved with the flat rate increase?
It will require for our pay grade one people that are at the entry zero years experience, it will require us to have some equity adjustments of about 15 to 20 cents to get them at the minimum.
So is there, and I don't know if that's amending the original motion or doing anything like that, but is that something that would be easily achievable to do with the flat rate, but then obviously adjusting for the minimum so we can get on that plan to get to $12 an hour?
Yes, sir. It's a standard practice with our compensation system that no one makes below the minimum, so it's an automatic fix to get people to the minimum in any pay grade.
Ms. Costea?
What would the 150 do? How would that work?
150 will cost just a tad bit more. It would provide, you know, a richer increase for our group, but of course, it's going to cost a little bit more.
Well, you were talking about going into the $12?
Sure.
That's more or less what we make question wise in regards to that.
Yeah, so it'll head us towards that area closer. We could make a change with the minimums. We can increase that potentially to 11 or leave it like it is because, for instance, our bottom people will go from 946 to what?
10.
Karen's a math person. 1016. So we could go to that area, and so we wouldn't need any of those special adjustments, and then there'll be some distance between some of our people with one or two more years of experience versus our entry. Based on the dollar increase, there will be some slight compression because we'll still have to take some monies to get them up to the minimum, and they may have one or two years of experience, and then we'll be hiring people at that same rate. So if you did do the $1.50, that would be better from an HR standpoint in terms of the compression.
Better funding, you say?
From a compression standpoint, it's better, but it's just will cost.
Ms. Halsey?
And so if we're talking about a dollar increase, that means that our minimum wage right now is $9.80, am I correct?
946.
946, so it would go to $10.46.
$10.60.
If we make a $1.00 adjustments. Well, I asked if it was possible to make the cents adjustments to get us to 1060, and I don't know if there was any...
Off the flat $1, yeah. He said this would be what he would normally do in an implementation.
It would happen automatically anyway with the structures. We have a structures that we've designed with the assistance of TASB that has the 1060 as the starting and going all the way up to pay grade eight, $24.
So, wait, I'm sorry, I'm not done. So it's currently 940?
946.
946, and we go to 1080?
1060 for manual trades, and if a clerical professional, it'll go to 1080.
With the dollar?
And how many employees are we talking about in those two categories? And I just want to make sure that I understand the jobs that we are talking about, that they are lunch ladies?
Yes.
Our bus monitors?
Yes.
Crossing guards?
Yes.
Custodians?
Yes.
Childcare development center workers?
Yes.
Instructional assistants in our general classrooms?
Yes.
Instructional assistants in our science and tech classrooms?
Yes.
Right, so these are all jobs that are critical to the running of our schools and to our children's increasing educational outcomes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Hanson?
I'm confused. If we do the flat $1, looking at this chart, if I'm at pay grade eight on manual trades, I get a dollar increase an hour?
That's correct.
And the person at pay grade one gets a dollar increase per hour?
When a pay grade one gets a dollar increase, or if with a new structure change to make it 1060 for your manual trades example, if they are still below the 1060, which if they're at 946 and get a dollar, then it'll be at 1046, so we'll need to kick in another 14 cents to get them at the minimum. So just for that, that one pay grade, we're going to have to do something special, and that's common.
Manual trade one.
Just pay grade one?
Just pay grade one. They'll get that little extra 14 cents to get them to the minimum.
To get them to that 1060. Okay, and then that's the same thing for clerical, paraprofessional.
It would be the same.
If I'm at pay grade eight, which is 2395?
Right.
I get a dollar.
That's correct. Now, for clerical, paraprofessional, we won't have to make the adjustments because the pay grades, we're coming from 1035 to 1080.
But if I'm at the higher pay grades, a percent increase is better for me.
Then the flat dollar...
And that's how we've been doing it for the past several years, but it still equates to a custodian getting 34 cents and someone getting a $1.50.
Well, but you have to look at the skills required too. I mean, do you have an HVAC repairman for electrical versus, you know, other skills? And what is out in, what is out in the labor market as far as, you know, the pay for those skills?
It looks like from my review that at a dollar, even at those upper pay grades, that's about a 3.5% increase, so I don't think anyone on the scale would receive less than about a 3.5% pay increase at a dollar.
I'm just trying to understand it all and...
The last couple of years?
No, not saying one job is better than the other, there are just different skills that obviously get paid different amounts.
Yes, ma'am.
The only problem with that is that 3% of someone making $40,000 is a lot more than someone making $10 an hour. It's just a huge difference because of the skills, I guess, that they have and the degrees.
I don't think we could do a flat increase every year, or it would create strange things down the line, but I think we've asked, you know, if a one-year or two-year kind of aberration would cause too great a distortion. In your opinion, Mr. Watson, is that it would not?
No, it would not. I mean, let's face it, we've had the same philosophy for teachers for years. We give a flat amount. We all have approved that for the last several years, and so it hasn't been catastrophic. We are still working on, of course, you know, the compression piece for teachers, but other than that, it hasn't been a problem.
My concern was that you said within the next three years, we'd like to get them to 12. Within the next three years, the cost of living increase continues to increase, and I would like to see it go closer to 15 than be working towards 12. That's my personal...
And we can provide proposals in the future that will help us give you options to go that direction.
Speaking as an individual trustee, I would, it would be great to pay everybody, you know, a lot more money, but I mean, I feel like I have to do it in a responsible manner, and I have to, we can't, these are salary adjustments that we're going to build on year after year after year. And if we go an additional, you know, $3 million in the hole this year, then we're starting off next year at that deficit. We're going to add to it. And within about six to eight years, our fund balance will be exhausted, and this district has previously been in a position where we weren't sure we would make payroll. That was years ago, but I don't want that, I don't want to see that again.
I don't either, and I know we have to be fiscally responsible, but I also realize the cost of living is high for those people earning hourly wages, and so that is why I made my comment. We need to get closer to 15 within three years as opposed to just trying to get to 12. Ms. Halsey?
We also continue to stack up a system that spends over $300 billion, $1 million on the STAR test across the state rather than distributing that money more equitably among our schools, and the state's share of the school financing has dropped from paying 45% to now 37%, and we continue to enable them when we also know that the highest predictor for how our students are going to perform on a STAR test is what their household median income is. So we're consenting our students to live in multi-generational poverty, and I think it's the wrong thing to do.
You think it's the wrong thing to do to give a dollar raise?
I don't think it's nearly enough.
Ms. Kantou?
Mrs. Griffith, our current contribution, and I know we're about to get to healthcare, but when we talk about raises and benefits, I think, you know, it's not, I guess, it should, I want us to take into consideration what we've done as a school district in the last several years being on this board. I know one year we gave 5% to hourly employees, the next year we gave four, and now we're doing a flat rate increase that even at an employee who's at 186, I believe, or 182 contracted days is almost $1,300 a year increase on top of the $5,388 of insurance that we pay for them. And so, you know, I was hoping that there'd be a little bit more consensus on this issue because our hourly employees are the ones who have students in our schools, they shop here, they live in our community, and yes, I wish I could vote for $15 an hour tonight, absolutely. I don't think anyone here genuinely wants to vote against that, but it's doing what's responsible, and as I look at the teachers in the room, it's, you know, I can give $15 an hour today, but, I mean, no one's getting an increase next year for anyone if we did that tonight. And so, you know, we are committed to all of our staff members, and we've voted consistently to pay for your insurance at a basic level, but it's not coming out of your paycheck as much as it used to be prior to some of us getting on this board, and so, you know, I'm excited about what we're doing, and I just want to echo Mrs. Kantou's comments, which is if we can see some type of proposal to get to $15 an hour by 2020 or, you know, down the road, that'd be greatly appreciated and something that I think, you know, would be worthwhile.
I think all our staff want to know that they feel appreciated and that the raise is just one way to help them feel appreciated. Are we ready to call for the vote?
I think that the direction that we're going, when you mentioned 1280 in three years, I think very realistically, $15 in five years is what I see coming down the road, at least from my perspective, from just looking at these numbers and what we're talking about. So I agree, I mean, I think that I've been down, I've been worked, I have worked at that level of what some of these individuals have worked at, and so I know what it is, but I'm also realistic as to what we can start with and work towards that, because I would like to work towards that too. In fact, I would much rather go with the flat rate of 150 rather than the $1, so...
Right now, the motion on the floor is $1 raise. Are we ready for the vote? Yes? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. All opposed?
And it's because I want, I would like to see the 150 for them.
Okay. Next item?
We have to finish the health insurance.
Oh, I'm sorry, the health.
We kind of divided that into two things.
Yes. Health insurance.
Okay. We were notified about two weeks ago that TRS is going to up their rates again, which is typical. Currently in our district, we offer all of our employees that are part-time at about 50% and above, the ability to receive the district contribution, which is $341 per month for each employee. The current plan that's out there is 341. That was the planned price for 1617. That was for the high deductible Plan One, plan with TRS. That plan is going up $10. And so I will tell you, from an HR standpoint, we love on recruitment circuit and when we're interviewing people, to be able to say that there is a paid employee, paid health insurance plan that this district offers, and I think that's a sense of pride we have when we're hiring people. So what we're asking you to do this evening is to consider fully funding the employee health insurance option for Plan One. The plan is going up to 351, so that's an extra $10 a month that our employees would have to pay, or the district can up the district contribution to 351. Currently, we have 945 people that are participant in our health insurance plan, so that's about $113,000 roughly that we're asking for this evening.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, I motion that the district increase its health contribution, employee healthcare by additional $10, making it 351, and thus fully funding the healthcare at the current level.
I second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven. Can go on to the, consider approval of budget amendments?
Karen?
On page, page 91 of your book, you will see the budget amendments or 19, for the month of, or budget number 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, for your approval tonight.
It's just because I have questions on it, but I make a motion that we approve budget amendment 18, 20, 21, and 22.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
McLaughlin, seconds. Open for discussion. There being no discussion, we'll call for the vote on amendments 18, 20, 21, and 22. All in favor? Seven.
And then I'll make a motion that we approve amendment number 19. I'll second.
I just want to hear... We have a second for McLaughlin.
Mrs. Griffith, this item totaling $175,000 to cover flood remediation expenditures at Bonham, is that in... flood remediation expenditures at Bonham, is that in addition to the settlement that we received?
This was from the flooding that we had, but it not only includes Bonham, it includes Hernandez, it includes Bowie, and it includes CDC.
Okay, so that's why that number is so large?
Yes.
Because it's for the entire district?
This was for the past flooding. This was for, the main portion of this is Surf Pro, and then, of course, we had to do some demolition and refixing.
Okay. This is a bill we've already incurred?
Yes, and, and so I'm waiting on the settlement portion, so we will get a portion of this back from the insurance, but I don't know how much.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. On a new claim?
On this new claim, yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion or questions? Call for the vote. All in favor? Seven. Consider, uh, consider nomination to the TASB Board of Directors. Anybody?
I would say that we approve the current person who served one year already. I think it's, um, his name is Brent Weiss. Oh, here it is. Will Struck. I had it all wrong.
Okay.
And he's from Leander ISD.
Okay.
He's seeking reelection.
A second. Halsey, seconds. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Six. All opposed?
Just abstain.
Abstain. One abstention. Mr. McLaughlin, it's abstains. Approval of the TASB delegate, delegate and alternate delegate?
Who are our current TASB delegate and alternate delegates?
I'm the delegate.
You're the delegate? Do you want to continue?
And Halsey's.
I nominate Margie Biacondo to be the TASB delegate.
Second from, from Biacondo. Any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
I nominate Ann Halsey to be the alternate delegate.
Is this someone that, in the event that?
She cannot make it.
Was unavailable? And is this at the state meeting?
At the Dallas, yeah, it's the state convention.
Do we know the dates?
October sixth through the.
Dallas, or where is it?
October. Starts on a Thursday through a Saturday.
Does any, do any of my colleagues wish to serve as the alternate delegate?
I would nominate you, Mr. McLaughlin.
I mean, I was going, I just didn't want to jump on somebody if they wanted to.
I nominate Mr. McLaughlin to be the alternate.
I'll second that.
It, it is Saturday afternoon.
Okay.
So, and it takes all afternoon.
I'm okay with that.
All in favor of Mr. McLaughlin being our alternate? Did I see your hand go up, Margie?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven, zero. Consider approval of Sarah Muchlinger Memorial Track at Hernandez. Did I say that wrong? Muchlinger? Muchslechner? I apologize.
While you get ready, Karen, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion. I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion right now that we approve the Sarah Muchlinger Memorial Track at Hernandez Elementary School as presented.
Second that motion. And Ms. Biacondo has seconded it. Open for discussion. I think I've.
Tell me.
Okay, well, the family and friends of Sarah Muchlinger? Sorry, um, are asking to put a track at the Hernandez site. I have put a copy of kind of where the vicinity that it would go behind Hernandez, and this is going to be a walking track, and they would like to start, I think they've already had a couple of fundraising events to put this track into place. Sarah was a, um, a former student of SMC ISD. She graduated in two thousand thirteen, and her mother is also an employee of San Marcos ISD and works at Hernandez, so this would be a great tribute to Sarah, and so we are excited to have the family here. Can you let me say?
Questions?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Sean Ash. I am the owner of Ash and Associates. We do surveying, engineering, and architecture. I, however, only acted in the capacity as a land surveyor on this particular project. Basically, Clay came to us and he wanted to do something for his daughter, so this has kind of been a community project. Ran, the only reason I'm really involved is Randy dragged it into me, dragged me in, and he saved my life too many times for me not to be here, so, but actually, no, that's not true. I would have done it for Clay anyway. But it's, it's basically a community project. We think of it more as a landscaping project, very minimal impact. It's on an existing playground already. Uh, it's, it's the area two, back towards Hunter Road, right next to Hernandez. No elevation. It will be adjusted. There's a fifteen-foot swath, eight hundred and forty feet long. There'll be six-inch lift taken out, and it'll be filled with base and concrete curb fifteen foot wide, and it's, uh, basically no impact as far as the purview's cover goes, and I really don't see an issue with it. If any, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
When do you expect it to be completed?
This is a gentleman you need to talk to.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Rogers. Dr. Rogers.
Well, you know, if, if y'all approve it tonight, we'll try to start shortly, and we'd like to do it before school starts and get it going. The weather's supposed to be good the next two weeks. Alex Torres has a paving company, and he, he gave me some bids on excavation, and he and his son have all the equipment they need, and then we, Mike Sausato said that he would haul off the dirt, no charge, and use it somewhere, and then Cole, Lionel Weber, I haven't talked to him personally, but some of his employees said they would help with the concrete work, and Clay knows someone at Colorado Materials that'll help donate some of the base or make the cost low. The granite, we're going to put two or three inches of granite between the curb, and, you know, that's probably going to be, have to be trucked in. That might be six thousand or seven thousand dollars. So we're hoping to get it done by the mid-August or something like that, you know, have minimal impact on the kids being able to use the playground, you know, so appreciate y'all for considering it.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Sure, Ms. Griffith, that area is not currently fenced, so will it be open to the public?
It has actually fenced.
Oh, that, it's closed at night?
It's a, that's a little play area.
And where they, like the ball field or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Backstops. They go around the area.
Okay.
There was one other area we kind of like to improve, too. There's a, there's a place there that's twenty-foot by about sixteen feet that's a wooden structure, you know, and the wood needs to be replaced and maybe leveled off, so we might do that while we're there, too, so.
But strictly for the use of the kids at the school?
Yeah, sounds great.
Awesome.
Most of my employees said, if you're doing it, can we run over there, but, you know, whatever.
Any other questions?
I'll get the key from Jay. He's not paying attention. Like at a community park.
Ready to call for the vote? All in favor? Seven.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Thank y'all very much.
Consider extension of long-term use rental of facility.
Um, yes, the Sozo Church of San Marcos is currently running the cafeteria, gym, and one classroom at Bowie Elementary for worship, service, and activity, and, of course, the district guidelines say that I've got to take it to you for long-term rentals, and they are asking for another extension of this agreement.
Is there any opposition from the campus?
No.
How long have they been?
Uh, I guess they've been there a year already. I'm not sure. Their second year? Yes, they've been there a year already, so this would be their second year.
It says, uh, extension of six months, so they're only going to be there, oh, I'm sorry.
No, meaning that he, the superintendent, so now it has to come to the board.
Oh, I see. Ms. Costea?
Karen, um, since they've gotten the, the year and then the six-month extension, and we're going to give them an extension to make permanent, I'm assuming, permanent plans, right? Is that what I'm reading here?
Well, long-term. I don't know how long they're going to be needing, but it'll, it'll let us service for the next couple of years, yes.
Um, when you're saying that, um, the next year will allow them?
Yeah, one-year extension. This will give them another one-year extension.
That they will be making plans to move some places out? I'm just trying to understand whether maybe this is just something that's going to be coming to us, you know, on an annual basis for this extension?
Um, that's how we've been doing it with all the other rent, uh, rentals that come and use our facilities. We come and bring these to you, um, so you can approve them, and, um, so this won't be the same. I don't know how long. I don't know if they're currently trying to build a new church. I honestly don't know.
I'm just, I'm just addressing this because it seems like we have some rules and, and we're going beyond the rules, and so, I mean, is it something that, so why even have them? Why don't we just, if they say they're going to need it for two years or ten years, five, five years, we ought to just do that?
But the district policy says one year.
That's what I'm saying. We have a district policy that says one year, but it, we don't go with one year.
We have the option to. We could say no, like if the, if.
I'm not wanting to say no. I'm just saying is that maybe we need to be a little bit more realistic as to when somebody is, rather than just, you know, well, this year we're going to get an extension, next year we're going to get another extension, and we get ongoing and going and going with extensions.
Yeah, and it all depends on the campus needs and what's going on and the district needs.
So right now, we don't have any district, I mean, campus needs, that this is something that's, okay.
I like getting annual feedback, because if they're, you know, this is not true with this crew, we'd be hearing about it, but, you know, if they were leaving the place amass or if they were a burden on maintenance or something, then I think.
How long have they been there?
One, one. A year.
What? Oh, okay.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the, and the extension of the long-term use rental of facility.
I'll second that motion. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Seven. Approval of site selection for new elementary school?
Okay, um, I did give the board, um, behind me is the district heat map, so it kind of outlines where the current schools are, and the little dots are where all of our current elementary kids reside, okay? I have also given you two additional heat maps, and these are for our economically disadvantaged students, so you can kind of see where they are. One of them is the, um, uh, gives you a little bit more detail, and then I think the second one that was printed gives you the percentage amount. So you'll see, um, like in the Hernandez, it's seventy, and the Crockett Zone, it's fifty-nine point six, and the Travis Zone, it's seventy-eight, Dezavala, it's seventy, seventy-seven point one, in the Bowie, it's seventy-three point five, and in the Mendez Zone, it's seventy-six point two. So that kind of shows you where all the.
I have a question about that. So each dot on this map reckon, uh, represents one student?
Pretty much, yes.
And for defining the terms of economically disadvantaged, what metric are we using?
Um, they are, uh, in our system as free or reduced lunch.
And how many of our total students are free or reduced?
Seventy.
Seventy-ish percent.
Seventy-ish?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-two? Seventy-five? Percent, right?
Or just.
Yeah, it draw, it sounds weird because you look at the elementary and they're high, but as soon as you get to high school, it drops way down to like in the fifties, so it brings the number as a whole down.
Ms. Tradd.
I'm going to make a motion that the school district selects the trace proposed location for elementary school number seven.
I second the motion. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I'd ask for information on flood, planes for both maps for both.
Yeah, I went out, and I think I know a lot of my colleagues did, too. I went out and looked at them. They're both be wonderful sites. I, I was, uh, I thought they both had a lot of potential. I'm going to vote according to what I think's best for a site right now, but, you know, I, I could see both of these, you know, in the intermediate term serving as elementary sites.
Ms. Hanson?
Um, I think this district's in a unbelievable situation where we have two developments offering us land. Usually we have to purchase that, and I don't believe that's ever happened before.
Have you ever been in this situation before?
No, and actually having to make a choice is unbelievable. I think both sites are excellent, um, and I see this district probably having to build another elementary in two to three years, so whatever site is not selected, I hope we convey to them that we would like to consider them again the following time. I've been to both sites, both for the site visit and looking at traffic. I do have some concerns about Posey, and I've expressed this to our superintendent. The getting to that site until they build the back road is going to be a serious concern. If anybody has driven the Posey Road and across that horrible bridge at six-thirty, seven, seven-thirty in the morning, and I don't even know about the afternoon, there are two cement companies that have semis filled with gravel that go across. They have, um, the university transportation system is out that road, so I have some concerns and, um, that I don't have at La Cima because I travel that one every day at about five-fifteen and don't see those same problems. So I, you know, if we choose Trace, we need to work with Tech Dot, the county, the city, whoever's out there to get it upgraded fast because that two-lane bridge is scary when you're having to deal with all those extra vehicles, and so that's my concern.
And we can adjust our routes. By then, we should have the routes on the facility on the east side built for transportation.
Right, but they're still going to have to come down I-35.
If we, if we, depending on how we zone, how we do the boundaries.
They're still going to have to come down I-35 access road and go across the bridge until Trace builds that other, you know, connecting road out.
Come in on old Bastrop.
Yeah.
And turn on Posey there.
Until they get that built. So that's, that's my concern, you know.
That's an important concern.
It says that there's no major issues with transportation, but you need to be out there about six-thirty and see all the major issues.
And, and I like the Trace place, Trace option because it's ready to go. It's already flattened out, and La Cima still has a lot of work to do, and that's one of the reasons I'm, think that Trace place would be better for us. Ms., oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Halsey?
Yes, and thank you. I agree with my colleagues that both sites have lots of advantages, and I do think that the Trace site is the one that will have the most number of young children, school-age children, most quickly. I do foresee that in the relatively near term, we might need not one, but two more elementary schools, and I think both La Cima continues to be a viable option, and also Martindale School seems like it could very well be in our near future. My specific question, though, to y'all is how is the, I understand how the new, the bond passed and the addition and renovations at Crockett will alleviate the overcrowding at Crockett, because right now our two campuses that are overcrowded are, are Crockett and most overcrowded are Crockett and Travis. So can you explain once again how we are going to use a school that is not in the Travis Zone to relieve the, the overcrowding at Travis? And my second question is, um, if we select Trace, where will students who move into La Cima initially be zoned, and conversely, if we selected La Cima tonight, where would Trace students initially be zoned?
Okay, now, um, I'm going to talk, we're going to talk about this, but please don't hold me accountable for the boundaries because as we move, they will shift a little bit, but our intent for the boundary lines to be drawn when Trace is open is that we're hoping that we can, if you'll see Travis comes across thirty-five, we would like to pull, there's like two hundred and thirty-five kids currently in this zone, we would like to pull them back onto the thirty-five side where they don't have to cross over thirty-five. That would alleviate some pressure between Crockett and Travis. We currently have room at Hernandez, so La Cima, they will be zoned to Hernandez like they currently are on the map. Then, uh, Trace, we would probably take the Trace and this side, uh, east of, of thirty-five back down all to go to Trace. So our goal would be to try not to cross thirty-five in the elementary zones.
So the Travis students will move to Dezavala once we have the Dezavala addition done?
Dezavala or, or Mendez. Whatever one makes more sense.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Biacondo?
Yes, um, I would remind everyone about, and it's correct, about, um, needing a school in the Martindale area. Um, we, it has been a long time coming, uh, and there is a subdivision that's going to be, um, that is in the, in the works there, and how soon I don't, I don't know, but we also need to look at that. We won't be ready to build a school for a while yet, so we need to look real closely in that area. My only problem with Cima is one that was pointed out here publicly, and I've gotten was pointed out here publicly and I've gotten calls about this and, and being in contact with some people about it being over the aquifer and, and the damages that it can do there just because of the, it was approved by a prior council, city council, and, but the current council, I think is more in favor of not approving subdivisions like this that, that impair the, anything over the aquifer. So, we already heard a detailed statement and got a letter from Diane Wassonick, who is the executive director of the San Marcos River Foundation, and she explained to us everything, how that recharge zone works. So, I am, I am hoping that we can all agree that Trace is the, the place where we need to go. It does need improvements, but I know that La Cima is a long way before they make theirs. The other thing is that, I like the configurations of the students and how they will go to, to this area.
Ms. Hanson, thank you, thank you.
I have two additional items. I know we're out at Trace, you talked about the clay soil. Have we done any studies about where the school site will be? She talked about, because we all know clay soil shifts and that, that changes our foundation.
The Trace people have done some.
On the actual elementary school site?
Not on that, not on that site, but at that area. And we know from the high school what we kind of, what we were expecting to have out there and, Mr. Uresti answered how we would build this.
So, I think, right now, we're going to have a geotech engineer come in and, once the site's approved. That's one of our first things we do is to get the geotech to come out after a survey. And then we're going to, they'll, they'll do borings and they'll go depending 30, sometimes 60 feet deep. And what we'll do is they're going to tell us with the PVR. That's what we're looking for, is that potential vertical rise of the clay. Once we know that, then we're able to determine what that structural foundation will be.
Whether it be a flat slab or a pier and beam?
That is correct, yep. And, and so, we have a lot of good options depending on the PVR. Sometimes, your PVR is low enough in a clay soil that you don't have to have suspended slab. We just have to wait for that report to come back.
Ms. Halsey?
Second was.
She's not.
After this is all finished, I would like to really see the district look at totally redistricting instead of just picking pieces here and there because the way that we did it was, makes us have really funny configurations. You can live across the street and go to a different school than somebody on one side of the street. And I would rather us get more to, as many kids going to a neighborhood school as possible. That's my preference, is just to look at redistricting afterwards. I think it would be more equitable to people who live in all the subdivisions and areas of town. And that way, we can relieve more at Crockett and Travis rather than just pulling piecemeal.
Okay, Ms. Redondo?
One, I just want to echo the comments made by trustee Vio Pando about a Martindale school. Had, I think, I think Cotton Center was a proposed location that unfortunately we had to take off the list because of how far along, or how not along they are. And it'd be, I think, 15 years and I don't know if, I'd look at Jay when I say this, is do we want a school on Septic Tank and Water Tower out there? Probably not.
Well, I know that's been a problem in the past, the infrastructure, but I still think that we need to consider.
Oh, absolutely. And that, if anything, that was what my comment was, is hopefully we get a school in Martindale.
Eventually.
Yeah.
Ms. Halsey?
Well, following up on Martindale, I think that's been, I mean, the number of years that I've been here, I think it's been an interest, shall we say. But I think at the presentation that they gave us, when they're looking in maybe five years from now.
Five, 10 years.
Five years. So, I don't think it's very far off and I think that maybe now that they're seeing where we're, where the other areas are, maybe they'll get a little bit more faster. And I truly believe that we are going to be needing another school, one or two, like Ms. Halsey indicated, and within the time this one finishes, is ready to open its doors. Who knows, you know, at the rate that we've been growing at that elementary level. So, and maybe they will hurry up because I think that that's been something that all of us have been interested in, in having a school in that area.
Ms. Halsey?
We have heard a couple of figures about the cost to construct at one site versus the cost to construct at the other site. Can you just please remind everybody how much money we have budgeted, one, for the construction of this new school, and then also if you think that there will be a, what the construction differential will be between the two sites?
I just wanted to double check. Are you talking about full construction costs for the elementary school specifically?
I mean, total, the total budget I think that we have is $30 million, correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay. And so, then, if we build it, one or the other, would we have a considerable savings?
Until we dive into what that design is, what, once we get the geotech reports back, that's when that decision will be made. At this point in time, I don't think there's significant cost differences between the sites because, one, we might have a different foundation type, but the other, we'd spend money on bringing in dirt and leveling, you know. So, it, it would balance out. At this time, I mean, we're, you can't make that determination. I feel comfortable with the budget that we approved through the bond process, that we're going to be able to build on either site.
Thank you.
Yes, just as an individual trustee, Jay, would it be possible for us to, I'm obviously give you direction on our site selection tonight, but if this is going to be a $3 million cost overrun or some sort of large number that it would come back to us? Or when do you actually acquire property after a vote like this?
Well, I, I think what we're going to have to do is, we, depending on which site is chosen, you know, we've got to do some preliminary stuff.
Right.
And of course, we would know the PVR and that kind of stuff. I, I mean, Coleman sent in his notes today, he thought it'd be, you know, $10 to $12 a square foot more if we do have to drill piers. You know, depending on what the PVR is, we may can just dig out and compact instead and build a slab over that. We can, we can definitely keep you all posted on, you know, what those costs are. I mean, I think we all believe right now, no matter what we have to do that we've seen so far, we can build a school within the budget of 30 million.
Ms. Redondo?
This, I guess, is for Mr. Uresti. So, this PVR, the boring into the soil, so we would have to do that at, I mean, obviously at the La Cima site too. And I guess, is there any concern about its location on the aquifer, that drilling or boring down 60 feet, like are we going to, or?
No, not at all. What, so if we were, if we were looking at that site, we'd still go through the same process as we go on any site. That geotech engineering is telling us how to build, how to build that foundation. So, you'd have to do that to any site. Even when I did my parents' house, I was like, get a geotech on this site. And they're like, what's that? Why would I do that on a residential? We found some, we found water where we didn't expect it. So, there's all, you have to do that from that standpoint. You're doing your due diligence. The other one is, if, if we were looking at, if we were worried about karst features or that type of thing, we might do an additional testing of ground penetrating radar, just to make sure there are no voids or karst features there. And when we start to lay out the actual site, where it sits on the building, we're able to do a better check of that to make sure we don't hit any voids or anything that we'd have to come in and.
I just had one follow-up question. On that particular location of La Cima, because it's in the recharge zone, are there, I guess, additional zoning or building standards in that location that we'd obviously pay for on the other end? So, one has some foundational costs possibly, but another has, I think, building standards. Or is that true? Or that's what I've gotten in letters? So, I just want to verify that, those comments.
It's how we treat our water. It's the big, is the big thing. We are required, no matter where we go, to, to treat our water a certain way. As we catch it, we either release it slowly and sometimes we have to let it release a little slower so the water quality is better. There's different ways to handle that. I think at both, both sites, I believe that they've said that no onsite water would be, have to, to be done by the school district. So, they would actually be in, by the community, the developers.
But do we have impervious cover restrictions on how much impervious cover we can put on that location?
Because of the way the developers set that up, that we would not be required because it's a part of the entire development.
Okay.
So, we'd fall under that.
Any other?
Following up on Mr. McLaughlin's overrun concern possibly. It's unfortunate because, you know, in, we had a situation when Travis was, was built and where we had to take money from another project in order to, because of the studies that were done after the fact. So, but we don't anticipate that kind of situation at either location as far as maybe having that overrun because of whatever problem there is with the soil or with the landscape or anything there.
At this time, we have no concerns. We've already started to start to program with, with the staff and we're still right on track from a square footage standpoint. Once we start to, once we get a site and able to lay out a site, see how much road we're doing, how much landscaping's required, you know, some of those city ordinances that we need to follow, we're able to get a better understanding of the cost. But at this time, where we're at, between the two sites, there's, we don't see any cost impact.
Well, and you know, the last time that we had that problem, they were presented to the board, you know, as far as bringing in those concerns. But it's like I said, it was after the fact and this is what I think that all of us, from my perspective, I don't want to see, even though realistically, you know, we can't see, we don't have a crystal ball that will tell us otherwise.
And one way we're going to help you with that is, if we continue with a construction, competitive seal proposal, for example, on this project, we'd be able, I have some relationship with contractors in the area that'd be willing to give us a 50% budget.
Well.
So, at least we know we're heading in the right direction before we hit that point.
I know that we had one total bond like we did the last time when Travis was built where they didn't allow to take from one project to the other one rather than having the separate bonds, but hopefully, maybe that's not going to be something that.
I haven't seen the official wording for the bonds. I'm not sure.
Mr. McLaughlin had his hand up first.
Yeah, it was great. The staff did a great job and the both developers in, in giving us a lot of information. I would like, since we seem to be growing or on the verge of a lot of growth that maybe we haven't experienced before as a district, for, you know, the administration to look at how other high-growth districts do land acquisition, maybe more proactively, not after a bond's approved, but with a longer horizon in, in mind. Because I think then neighbors would not be surprised that the district was considering a specific location and they, you know, other entities would kind of plan around what our long-term vision is for facilities. So, I know that's beyond what we get to tonight, but I, I think if we could do that sometime in the next year while it's fresh, that would be a useful exercise.
Ms. Halsey?
Yeah, and this is another question I forgot to ask earlier, so maybe we don't have that information. And I know I just drove out to the sites the other day, but can you tell me the distance from this location that we're in tonight to each of the sites?
From this location?
It's 6.3 miles from here to Trace and it's 4.6 miles from here to La Cima.
Thank you. And so, I think going along with Mr. McLaughlin's comment.
Yeah, Google.
That I'm also in favor of looking proactively for sites and I think we also should think about the proximity to our other schools in terms of transportation and multiple issues related to urban sprawl. And I think that we've talked previously about having a conversation with the city council and I think we need to make that conversation actually happen. I'm happy that we are able to coordinate in some sense this decision with them, but I think also, you know, previous times, they put in entire developments that were completely within the city of San Marcos boundaries without being in the city, in the San Marcos CISD zone. And I think that that's been detrimental to our district. So, I think we need to have those conversations.
Ms. Hanson?
Mr. Cardona, can you remind us how much acreage each tract is offering us?
La Cima is offering 15 acres and Trace is offering 12.
15 versus 12?
Just one final comment.
Ms. Redondo?
Hopefully, this is one of the final comments of the night. It'll be my final comment on this issue, is, you know, ideally, in a perfect world, you know, talking with members of the community, had we not sold the Lamar property, I think, you know, to address urban sprawl, you know, had this board not voted to sell it off, I think that would have been an excellent site for some type of downtown school or something that would have been a neighborhood school like so many people want. But again, hindsight is 20/20. So, these are the two sites we get to vote on tonight.
Are we ready for a vote?
Mm-hmm.
Motion was that we build on the Trace subdivision. So, all in favor? All opposed? Six, one. Going to go into closed session. It's authorized by Section 551.071 and 551.07 of the Texas Government Code, discussion regarding superintendent salary and retention and consent.
We'll take a five-minute break.
Okay.